Hereby call to order the February 3rd, 2021, meeting of the Cohasset School Committee. This otherwise in-person public meeting is being held virtually via Zoom in accordance with Governor Baker's declaration of an emergency state of emergency in this Commonwealth. But it is, as always, being streamed live on Facebook as well as Cohasset 143 TV. It's 6:01 PM. Would all committee members present, please indicate so, enroll call? Mrs. Colery.
Present.
Mr. Kearney.
Present.
Mrs. Mar.
Present.
Mrs. St. Ange.
Present.
I am present. Craig McClellan. All committee members are present. We move right into the first agenda item, which is the public comment section. I know there are a lot of people watching tonight, probably with some comments about the prospect of the K through five or pre-K through five increase in in-person learning. But public comment is related to items that are not on the agenda. So if you have something to add about something that's not an issue that's not on the agenda, please do so using the Q and A feature at this time. Otherwise, just wait until we get to the agenda item that is of utmost interest tonight to everyone.
I would like to make a public comment, please.
Oh, Mrs. Colery.
Um, so.
Please state your address, Mrs. Colery.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Ashley Colery, 205 Sawyer. Um, in my other life, I have a wonderful career with a nonprofit that leads me to do lots of work with prevention and diversion for young people around the issues of substance misuse and addiction. And I have met lots of wonderful people along the way, one of which is the special agent in charge of New England for the DEA. And I had a conversation with him last week. And he let me know that there is an alarming amount of synthetic crystal methamphetamine in New England right now. And particularly alarming to him because it seems very clear that they're targeting young people. They're seizing lots of pills that look like Adderall, but are pure synthetic crystal methamphetamine. So it's a very different, obviously, result. If someone takes one of these pills expecting it to be Adderall, and it is in fact pure synthetic crystal meth. So I just wanted to make that announcement when there were lots of parents here because I think it's really important to just let our young people know that that is making the rounds on the streets of New England. And they should just know that pills should come from the pharmacy with their name on the bottle. And if they don't, there is a very high likelihood that they're not going to be what it is that they think they're buying. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Colery. Again, public comments for items that are not already related to items that are on the agenda. So Mr. Allen's asking, Christopher Allen did not notice addresses, asking about full-time learning in the middle and high school. I think that's related to the, we can, we can address that when we're talking about the increase in in-person learning in elementary schools. Megan Berry has just asked, has Cohasset received any word back from the state regarding whether they will send vaccines to the town so the teachers can be vaccinated? If so, there's a timeline available. Again, I think that's, I think that's related to the increased in-person learning model. So we'll address that when we get there. I don't see any other points at this point, so we'll move on to the next agenda item. That's a superintendent's report, so we turn the meeting over to our superintendent of schools, Dr. Patrick Sullivan. Dr. Sullivan.
Thank you very much, Chairman McClellan. And I'd like to say thank you to all the parents and staff members out there and guardians to show interest in this important meeting. Obviously, there's some important matters at hand regarding getting our students or proposal to get our students at the elementary levels, PK to five, back full-time. So I'm not going to have a lot of comments, except I did want to just, at the last meeting, a question was asked, I believe, by Mr. Kearney regarding our arts program and what are some of the things happening in our arts program? And our director of fine arts and music, Stephanie Moriarty, did share with us some events that have been happening. And some of them I was just remiss and had forgotten about, but also, but certainly enjoyed, including our tribute to Veterans Concert that was released in November. It was very well done. She commented that the Jazz Ensemble meets every Wednesday after school and that there is a Google Classroom group where students share listening tracks and conversations about jazz. Should mention that all of our offerings are running and they've been quite creative in the way they've been able to do it when the weather was good outside. And then when some of the regulations reduced regarding brass instruments and such, able to spread out indoors. The acapella, our copella, meets every Monday after school. The group has a Google Classroom with rehearsal tracks and is hoping to be outperform in the community outdoors come the spring. Two students, Julia Willett and Lila Khan, were selected for South Shore Districts. Congratulations, Julia and Lila. They represented Cohasset High School at a weekend festival during the weekend, during the first week of January. Lila Khan has recently auditioned for Allstate. This is Massachusetts' highest musical honor. And I don't know if the results have come out yet, but we're, I certainly eagerly awaiting them. Mindful moments have been taking place online each week for students before school. That's both in-person and remote students have been able to participate. Students are able to start their day in a peaceful, centered, and calm way, which is always great in every facet of life nowadays. Cross-curricular projects and arts integration have been a focus during remote learning. Art students are creating a large-scale installation for a science course and partnering with guidance for an SEL, a social-emotional learning initiative that's coming soon. Students have been meeting with teachers to work on those projects. Art students are partnering with several groups to work on community-based projects. Work is continuing with the 250 Celebration Committee to complete paintings and pieces. Most recently, a meeting was held to discuss an interactive installation of the Historical Society in Cohasset. Also, there's an online reading session for a spring theater offering. And they're working with a playwright to get permission to hopefully perform this online. While not at the high school, she wanted to highlight the efforts of Derial students to knit hats for Rosie's Place, as they have done for many years, working closely with Anne Berman. And of course, we have Principal Sullivan here and great work in that, in that regard. And yeah, it's been a challenging year for everyone. But as you can see, our arts program is shining through. And I know that they're, they're a creative group and they're constantly looking for ways to help our students and to provide more, more for our students. So I just wanted to update on that as kind of the answer to the question that was, that was posed last time. This is National School Counselors Week. So I just want to say thank you to all of our school counselors. The compassion and the guidance that you show our students is so appreciated every day. And it's nice to take some time to recognize their efforts. They've been certainly paramount during this difficult period of time. And we obviously are in the month of Black History Month. So before I get to our student representative to update and you can ask questions, or Jake, maybe Dr. Scollins, you could update a little bit on some of our planning process for Black History Month. And, you know, I know you'll make the point that we like to celebrate diversity, inclusion, and, you know, collective history all the time, not just during this month. But we certainly want to celebrate Black History Month this month of February. So Dr. Scollins, I'll let you update a little bit.
Great. As you can see, we have a variety of resources that we've been collecting. And I'm just sharing a quick Google Doc. It actually started at Deer Hill with Cassie O'Brien, who is our instructional technology specialist, and then at Osgead also. So she decided to create this for teachers and Principal Sullivan and shared, shared it with us. And so we said, hey, let's grow this. So as you can see, we have it broken down into instructional materials, student videos, books, events, and student online resources. And so we're going to continue to add to this so that this is a resource for teachers to use with their students. And also, I've asked that if there are some lessons happening or some things that they would like us to see or they're willing to share, that they could add that to this, to this list also, or email me so that I can share that out for, for those that would like to, like to see it. But I'll just kind of scroll down. You can see some things that we already have within the district. We have Brain Pop, which is a, which is an app that we use that has all sorts of, normally, science is what you think about with Brain Pop, but they have some really nice other things around social studies. So you can see there's a Barack Obama for elementary, 30 new high school books on social racial justice. So here's a list of that from the library, which is a wonderful resource. So there's lots and lots of things. And this really just started. So I can imagine that there'll be a lot more things that will be added to it because we really want to make sure that, that we are focusing this month. But like Dr. Sullivan said, this is something that should be throughout all of our curriculum and all that we do all the time related to our inclusivity. We're continuing to work with Dr. Warnham from Diversity, Inc. and really looking at how, how do we make sure that everyone feels included? How do we celebrate everyone and make sure that this is a place where people feel safe? So it's a quick overview.
Thank you, Dr. Scollins. So at this point, then, I don't know if the committee has any questions regarding that or anything involved with Black History Month. You know, clearly, we're also doing things in, in the schools as well. I know there's been some nice, nice bulletin boards created by Deer Hill students. And there's really activities planned at all levels, so that's exciting. And if there aren't any questions on any of that, I will turn it over to Jake Squatrito, who is obviously one of our students who's involved with the superintendents and school committee advisory council. And Jake is here to update on anything you'd like to, Jake. And then, of course, he's here for any questions the group may have of him. So Jake, take it away.
All right, so there's not really too much specific to update on at this time. I feel like everybody's getting very settled this week. I feel like returning from Christmas break, there was just a lot of like uncertainty. It was hard, like shifting back. But I definitely can sense throughout the school that people are definitely a lot more calmer. We're more, more comfortable getting back into everything, which I think is really good. And we're just looking forward to getting more data on how people are feeling and talking to them specifically and personally, just to see what's really going on. And I think that'll be really interesting to discuss in our next meeting.
Thank you, Jake. Yeah, we have a meeting this coming week to look at some of that data, to drill down a little bit more on, on the stress that our students might be feeling and how we're able to help them kind of be relieved from that stress. So thank you very much, Jake. And I'm glad to hear that, you know, you feel a student body and you are settling into routines. Certainly, our sports are settling into their routines. They've been doing very well over the last couple of weeks. And so I'm really happy to say that's, that's moving along very well and progressing well. Any questions from the committee for Jake? Okay, well, thank you, Jake. Well, Jake, I'll let you, I know you probably have studies to do and homework to get ready for tomorrow. So I'll let you depart, but thank you very much, as always, for updating us and for giving the school committee the opportunity to ask questions of you if they had questions. So thank you, Jake. See you soon. See you next week.
Thank you. Have a great night, everybody. Thank you.
You too, Jake. Thank you. So if I can move on, then Chairman McClellan, if that's okay. With, I would further ado, I'll move to our, our next agenda item, which involves our high school program of studies and then our middle school program of studies. I'd like to welcome our principals here. You can see we have Principal Farrell and Principal Sullivan, Osgead and Deer Hill principals, who will be there here when we present about our plans for full-in-person learning at the elementary. And then, of course, we have Principal Scott from the high school and Principal Mills from our middle school, who are presenting on our middle school and high school program of studies. So I will share my screen just so that we can get the high school program of studies up. And there you are, and I'll leave it to you, Principal Scott, to tell us a little bit. I know there's not a lot of changes, but a little bit about changes that may, may be happening in our program of studies.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Now, I'll keep this brief. I know there are more pressing issues that people want to discuss. There really are no substantive changes to the high school program of studies. We're continuing with a couple of changes that were begun last year, the first of which are two state-level changes for the social studies. The first is a change in sequencing, which puts US history up front with freshmen and sophomores and moves our world history back. We're in the first year of implementing that. It's gone very well. I don't see any real hiccups to it. The second is a state law that was passed last year that requires all students, beginning with this current freshman class, to complete a civics project endorsement. And so if you look in the program of studies, you can find more information about that and courses that potentially will be able to meet those requirements will be designated with the CPE distinction. So those are the social studies changes. The other two, again, are really kind of continuations. The first of those are shift in our algebra scope. So we took a look at our Algebra II with trigonometry, our Algebra II course and our trigonometry course in our CP level. And we've been talking for a few years about working in more Algebra II and less trigonometry because it's more beneficial overall for students. We had made this change in name last year, but because this is a spring course, we really weren't able to implement it, given the closure. This year, we think it's actually going to work out great. It does address some of the learning gaps that we have with Algebra II. We think it's going to give our students a better base for more practical math, set them up better for college, and we'll be able to get plenty of trig and pre-calculus in. So we're not concerned about eventually getting to that. It's just more of a shift in starting with a little bit less trig and a little bit more of an Algebra II basis. And then the final change is we've, we have an identified problem in the block, which has to do with the sequencing and gaps in sequencing of language courses. So one of the downsides of the block is that you might go a semester or a full year without continuous language study. And we've had programs in the past which have acted a little bit as review courses where students have come in, we've put them in situations where we've given them online resources. We've put them in classes where they can hear the language and kind of continue learning. One of the, the things that have come out of COVID is a lot of asynchronous work around unit development, video presentations, flip models. And with pending some professional development money and some work over the summer, we think we can actually create these courses or take these units and make them into discrete courses where students could go in for pass-ville credit, sit with, for 54 hours in, in a space, continue to study Spanish or French and, and not miss a beat when they pick up the next level. So we feel like there's some opportunities there that came out of the pandemic. But again, that'll be kind of dependent on what we're able to accomplish over the summer and what the, the interest of the students is. But those are the major changes. We'll be sending out notices to parents this week on the scheduling timeline. And hopefully, students will have schedules when they leave in June and will be good to go. But that's really the, the substance of it for the high school.
Thank you very much, Principal Scott. Committee or Dr. Scollins, I don't know if you had any comments on the study, program of studies? No?
No, just that, you know, Brian and his team did a really nice job looking at, one, how to, how to look at those gaps in, in algebra. I think also that bridge in our language is, is important because that is, that is interesting with the, like, the quarters. So I can see that's, and certainly doing what we needed to do in world history and figuring that all out. So a nice job by the team.
I second that for sure. So Chairman McClellan, I don't know if you have any questions of Principal Scott or anybody on the committee?
I do not.
Okay, with, with, Ellen does. Let me stop share here so we can see everybody.
Thanks.
I believe Ellen does.
Yes, so I'll make it quick. And my first question, and I apologize because this happened last year, is the reduction in credit requirements in science for graduation went from 20 to 17.5. Was that?
Yeah, what that's a reflection of is we, there was a, initially, not initially, but years ago, we had a semester introduction to chemistry course, which was really not chemistry proper. Used the umbrella of chemistry to talk about basic lab skills, foundational science methods. A lot of that got moved down in the scope and sequence into the eighth grade. And what we found is that we don't need a full semester course. So we increased our wellness offering from a quarter to a semester and decreased our intro to chemistry, which is separate from our ChemCom and our accelerated chemistry classes. So that's the reason for that.
Okay. I have another question. I love the civics project addition to the, to the curriculum. And in reading through the requirements, the learning outcomes, so much of that can be applied across a lot of disciplines. And as with everything in life, if you don't exercise a certain, you know, skill set repeatedly, you know, you, you could lose it. And I think from the eighth grade research study project to this, there's a lot of very valuable habits and, and disciplines that kids can use. And I don't know if, you know, in some, you know, coffee shop, you might think about how, how to take some of these applications because they're real-world applications and apply them to, to other areas within the curriculum.
So what you'll see is that our CPE distinctions go across multiple disciplines on purpose. And Jim Willis has done a great job, our social studies chair, of articulating what the state requirements are and really talking to people about, you know, a lot of this stuff is stuff that we're already doing. So it naturally fits into some courses. We're going to do a little bit more professional development around that. But unlike other schools that are making this, you know, a freshman world or freshman US history project, and that's where everybody does it, we deliberately stayed away from required courses for that reason. We want, we want to put it in the electives so that kids understand that civics is a multi-disciplinary kind of engagement. And there are a lot of different ways to, to involve it. So we have stuff in the sciences, we have stuff in, obviously, social studies, but our AP language has a project that they do that'll fulfill the requirement. Our wellness programs do things, and a lot of it, again, we're already doing. It's more just articulating that to the students and deliberately identifying it as civics.
Great. Thank you. And I'm sorry, and just, just one more question on the grade point average. I know last year, there had been some conversation about a study group and, and maybe revisiting the grade point average. I don't know if, if it was revisited and we're staying with where we were or if that's based on everything that's happened, has been kind of not been a priority.
It, it, it has gone down on the priority list. It was actually, I think, three years ago. And then we had a leadership transition, and then we had COVID. And the committee was like, you know what, we're fine. Everything is kind of recalculated anyway, anyway, for colleges. Their interpretations of our transcripts and GPAs and everything else continues to change. Our college acceptances right now are outstanding despite the changes. I think in some ways, they've improved with the changes to the SATs. So I'm sure we'll revisit it at some point, but with all that's going on, it really hasn't been a priority.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
Okay, super. Well, typically, we have, we take a vote on the program of studies. And we do it for the middle school, we'll do it for the middle school as well. So I guess at this point, I'd entertain a vote, if you so wish, Chairman McClellan, to approve the program of studies for this next year.
Of course. There are motion on the floor to that effect.
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Mars. There's a second?
Second, Lydia St. Ange.
Second, Mr. St. Ange. John Faver indicates so. Roll call, Mrs. Colery.
Aye.
Aye.
Mar.
Aye.
Mrs. St. Ange.
Aye.
Hi, Craig McClellan. Dr. Sullivan, that is unanimous. Principal Scott, thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you, Principal Scott. And now we'll move on, if I may, to Principal Mills with a presentation of the middle school program of studies. So Principal Mills.
Sure, thank you.
Take it away.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. You know, similar to Brian's remarks, you know, try to make it brief. It wasn't a year with extensive changes. So you just outlined them. We sort of reformatted the section describing course requirements. We looked at the document. We tried to look at the document from, with the eyes of a new family either moving into the district or coming to CMS from fifth grade. And we wanted to make sure that as, as they read it, that it was a useful document. So we just rewrote the course requirements section and instead sort of did it in a table format and had it explain the course overview by grade. So kids and families would know exactly what to expect each grade. So that's this first section. And Dr. Sullivan, you can scroll a little bit. The second section that we changed was guidance services. Professionally, oh, no, yeah, keep going down. Sorry. Right there.
There you go.
Yep. In the middle school, we don't really use the phrase guidance counselor anymore. We, the professionally, they're school counselors now. The frameworks are written for school counseling. So we replaced that term. And then we just sort of rewrote the section. We included the, essentially, the, the job description of the school counselor because that hadn't changed very much. But that second paragraph just sort of lays out how a student could avail themselves of counseling services. And we just wanted to update it that, you know, for where to find the counselor. We don't use the, what's now the high school guidance suite. Our counselor's not there. They're in the middle school. Students would come to the middle school main office and make an appointment. So that just reflected that. Probably the biggest change was inserting a class. This class is digital literacy and computer science. It's really incumbent upon the approval of the creation of a tech integrationist position secondary. The, the plan was going to be that the tech integrationist position would be a .5 tech support for the middle school and high school, for the students and faculty of the middle school and high school. And then .5 of their responsibilities would be teaching. So this course would be for sixth and seventh graders, it would be a specialist. It would be one term, which is a third of the year. Our, for next year, our next year's sixth graders and next year's seventh graders would have a choice of either art or computer. That year, with the understanding that, you know, the next year, they would take the other. In other words, kids will have one year of computers and computer science and two years of art. The class is based on a couple of things. It's based on the digital literacy frameworks from the state. The first portion of the course is to sort of build on the computer skills that students acquire at Deer Hill to help them around things like file organization and email etiquette and those sort of workflow pieces that, you know, we frequently say, kids, kids are great with technology. They are, they're super with social media when it comes to productivity, technology and software. They don't always have those skills. So we want to build on what they've learned at Deer Hill. And then, so that's the first part of the class. The second part of the class is really to provide them an opportunity to unleash, to learn a little bit about programming, but really develop their digital creativity, which is why it, it works kind of in conjunction with an art class, which is a visual creativity. So they would have the opportunity to learn a little bit of programming and then use it to build something creatively. So I, I won't read through all the objectives within the class. Once again, they're based on the frameworks, and I think they were, they, they achieve those, those sort of umbrella goals for the course. So we're really excited. We hope we get the position. And, and that's it. Like I said, there were not, not extensive changes.
Thank you very much, Principal Mills. So Chairman McClellan, I'll leave it to you and to the committee if you have any questions regarding the program of studies for the middle school.
Principal Mills, thank you for the presentation. Are there any members of the committee that have any questions for Principal Mills relative to what he just presented?
And of course, Dr. Scollins, too, if you.
Yeah. And can I point out one thing? Can I address one thing that was not a change? But last year, when I presented the program of studies, Ashley, you had talked about our art classes, which are named, you know, named Art VI, Art VII, and Art VIII. And you were hoping that there could be a more creative nomenclature around the class. Our visual and performing arts department are working on unpacking their new frameworks. And obviously, with COVID last year and then this year, most of our PD and department time have been focused on hybrid instruction. There, they haven't got to that. But I think once, once they sort of revisit the, the frameworks, they unpack the new ones and sort of shape their course around it, it'll be easier. the frameworks, they unpack the new ones and sort of shape their course around it, it'll be easier to rename the courses at that point. So I didn't want you to think we forgot, but it's a work in progress.
Really appreciate your follow up. Thank you.
Okay, there are no further questions, then we can entertain the same motion to approve the program of studies for Cohasset Middle Schools. There are motion of that effect on the floor.
So moved.
Motion made by everyone. So let's take Mr. Currie's motion. Seconded by who? Mrs. St. Ange, I guess you made the motion as well, so you can second this instead.
Second, Lydia St. Ange.
Seconded by Mrs. St. Ange. John, in favor indicates own roll call, Mrs. Colery.
Aye.
Mr. Kearney.
Aye.
Mrs. Mar.
Aye.
Mrs. St. Ange.
Aye.
Hi Craig McClellan, that motion is unanimously passed. Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Thank you, Principal Mills.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. And actually, at this point, I'll let Principal Mills and Principal Scott go as I'm sure, you know, busy, busy lives and and families to attend to. So thank you very much, gentlemen, for being here. And thank you for all the work you do with your teams. And we're excited for these courses to to move into action. Thank you.
So Dr. Sullivan, before we get to the 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 big show here, I just wanted to sort of give people an idea of where of how we I was thinking it might be presented. You'll you'll make a presentation, of course. I believe our CTA president, the Cohasset Teachers Association, President Robert Erlinson, who is a science teacher in the middle school, wants to make a brief statement to the committee. And then I was going to ask for a vote for the committee to to hear from members of the public before we deliberate on the issue. So that's that's how I anticipated it might go, just to give everyone an idea of how this is going. And Dr. Sullivan, I turn it back over to you.
Okay, wonderful. So you'd like me to do my my part first, Chairman McClellan?
Please, sir, yes.
Will do. Thank you. Okay. All right. Well, I should first of all, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present this preliminary plan for hopefully bringing our students pre-K to five back in person. And with a target date of March 1st, at the end of this, I am going to be asking the school committee for a vote after, you know, the presentation and discussions for the approval of this preliminary plan with a pending a final approval on February 24th, 2021. So the next school committee meeting, essentially having a finalized vote just to make sure that we, there are some further conversations we need to have, make sure we have everything ironed out. So I'll be asking for that vote. And I'll also be asking for a vote on something I'll be presenting within this presentation regarding educator testing and a plan that I hope to put into place. And it does. It does involve some funding. So I like approval for for that program too. So that's basically where where I am as I get into this. And of course, with me, I have Principal Farrell from Osgood and Principal Sullivan from Dear Hill. Thank you, Principal Farrell and Principal Sullivan for being here. Thank you for, you know, your collaboration on on this and always with your collaboration with your staffs as we try to plan moving forward. And thank you, Dr. Scollins and Sue Owen and also Barbara Swanka and Elisa Gittens Call for for their ideas and thoughts as we collaborated regarding this. So first of all, you know, just to by way of introduction, you know, we are recommending an increase in in-person learning pre-K to five to five days a week, beginning Monday, March 1st, 2021. This is sort of an overview. I'll get into more details regarding this as we move forward. But, you know, the question is why, you know, and I want to start off by complimenting the staff and thanking them for the great work they've done to make our hybrid model a success. You know, it really is the great work of our staff and our teachers, all of our educators, not only to put forth a quality model and a quality hybrid model, but to do so in a very safe way. We do obviously understand, and I've made this point many times, that the paramount nature of in-person learning to avoid academic regression, to support the social emotional needs of the students, particularly our youngest students. It's it's apparent from our data that I'll be sharing that our safety measures in school have been effective. There has been no spread within our school. Infection rates among elementary school community members have been very low. We'll get into them specifically as we move forward. And I want to acknowledge that although we are taking on an additional risk by having students closer together, we will still be following the DESE and the state requirements of a three foot distance between students in our classroom and a six foot distance when students are eating. And that includes meals, lunch and breakfast in some cases. And then, of course, snack. So once again, just to summarize kind of where we're going with this is we are recommending the path that we feel is best for our students, all of our students, which is returning all elementary students to full time in-person learning on March 1st, 2021. So a couple of factors to consider here, on December 18th, a DESE released a set of regulations around student learning time. Actually, it's synchronous learning time, not really student learning time. And these these regulations included districts having to have 35 hours of live or synchronous teaching over a 10 school day period. That's an average on a district. Students, they said, must have an opportunity to have a live interaction with their teachers every day. And they said optional office hours do not count within those hours. That calculation, districts that do not meet the minimum time expectations were said to be required to make up the hours at the end of the school year. Thankfully, we do exceed the required SLT by a good amount. We have 47 to 48 hours, what we what we average right now over a 10 day school period. But we are below the 35 hours of live or synchronous time at our elementary schools. Right now, we're about 33. And that's with the the addition of the Wednesday. Again, we're not required to switch that because we do meet the average. But I do want to note that we are slightly below where we should be in terms of live and synchronous hours. Rather than increasing that time and adding more remote learning time for our students at the elementary level, which we really don't feel is developmentally appropriate and a route we want to take to increase in-person learning for our students. We we want to add as much as possible in-person learning for our for our youngest kids. We know that remote learning is difficult at the elementary level for both students, families and staff. It's hard to go back and forth for a staff member to toggle between those two models for sure. As a parent, I can attest to the challenges of having four students that are in in a school system, three of which are in the elementary level, juggling the schedules even with a robust and very passionate teacher effort is is very difficult on families. And again, a move to in-person learning will eliminate the need for all students and staff to go back and forth between in-person and remote learning. I think that's going to be a great relief to our 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 families, to our students, and I hope to our staff as they consider, you know, the the virtues of really doing what they do best, which is working in front of the students and providing them with that that great hands-on learning. So I want to highlight a few data points regarding the spread of of COVID within our schools and what we know now that, you know, maybe we didn't know, we certainly didn't know at the beginning, excuse me, at the beginning of the school year. Okay, this is a recent study that was highlighted by the Centers of Disease Control. And, you know, you see the the overarching conclusion here is that K to 12 schools can have in-person learning with limited in-school COVID-19 spread. That was the conclusion of the study. In this study, which highlighted 17 Wisconsin K to 12 schools in rural Wisconsin that had opened up and implemented measures that are very similar to the measures we put into place. They've used masks, as you can see in the middle here, teachers reported more than 92% of students use masks. Our our rates are much higher for using masks in our schools. Establishing groups of 11 to 20 students, which is which is exactly what we did and what we will have as we move forward. Staff maintain the six feet of distance, you know, through this, obviously, we're moving to a three foot distance because we can't do it at six feet within the elementary schools. And that is what Desi recommends, you know, the least least three feet. It's also what when we get into the American Academy of Pediatrics information, what they recommend. And in this study, it wasn't always six feet, but the staff did try to maintain six feet distance. Then they quarantined after exposures. And that's something that we've done quite well here in Cohasset so far. Some of the data that came out of it is during the 13 weeks of in-person learning, again, much larger numbers than we have. Seven of 4,876 students and zero of 654 staff are known to have gotten COVID at 19 at school. And no spread is known to have occurred to or from staff in school, despite sometimes with very high community spread in this in these Wisconsin communities. So that was a study that was very, I think, pertinent to where we are right now and and very recent. And then, of course, you have the information from the American Academy of Pediatrics, who came out with a major study in the fall, which led to a lot of, it was a lot of the data that Desi was using, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in in advocating for getting students in person as much as they can. And they've done some updates based on the data that they've seen throughout the the past months, you know, since September, anyway. And some of them, some of the details I've quoted here from the study and the recent update of the study. I'll just kind of go through them. First is although children and adolescents play a major role in amplifying influenza outbreaks, to date, this does not appear to be the case with SARS and COVID-2. At present, it appears that children younger than 10 years are less likely to become infected and less likely to spread infection to others. They do say desks should be placed at at least three feet apart. I want to be clear, they do recommend six if possible, but they do say at least three feet apart. Some countries have been able to successfully reopen schools after first controlling community widespread while using three feet of distance between students without increases in community spread. And I think this point is very important. There is mounting evidence of the low transmission within schools, even in communities with escalating community transmission. Ultimately, the decision to open schools to in-person learning should be based on the joint guidance of local and state public health authorities and school administrators based on the current data in the community as well as the evidence of transmission in schools. So I'll take a minute and look at the evidence of transmission in our schools. And I want to look at it from two different angles. First off, we have two schools right now, which are primarily at six feet. Those are our two elementary schools. When I say a six feet, I mean six feet distance between students in classrooms and six feet distance between students when they when they eat and are taking off of their PPE. And they're, of course, in their appropriate places to be facing one direction. And then we have two schools that because of necessity are at less than six feet and often three feet. So we have a unique opportunity to actually look at a database in the same community where we have students distance with the same PPE at six and students distanced at this with the exact same PPE at three. And I want to go over the data to make sure everyone understands it. So to date, at our elementary schools, again, at six feet, we have had 12 Deer Hill School Community Members, students or staff, that includes both groups, confirmed as testing positive for COVID-19. Nine Osgood School Community Members, students or staff, confirmed as testing positive for COVID-19. We have had no transmission of COVID-19 within class of public schools. So you're going to see that's the same for both data sets. We have had no spread to anyone who's determined to be a close contact in class of public schools. Going to be the same for both data sets. And our confirmed positive data has been consistently lower in the schools than the confirmed positive data for the town. And as you move to three feet, it's the same. Okay, to date, we have had 18 class at a school community members, student or staff, confirmed as testing positive for COVID-19. And we have had seven class at middle school community members, students or staff confirmed as testing positive for COVID-19. Almost the same and actually proportionally just about the same. We have had no transmission again of COVID-19 within class of public schools. We have had no spread to anyone who was determined to be a close contact in class of public schools. And again, our confirmed positive data has been consistently lower than the confirmed positive data for the town. So that we can make a strong case that our our protocols are working at three and six feet. And again, this is all about mitigating risk. What's, can we, can we get in here and get our students the in-person learning that they need so deeply academically and socially emotionally? And can we do it safely? And this is the data that I'm citing to show that I believe we can. Remember, we've had a lot of protocols that we've put into place to make sure that our students and staff are safe. We've had regular high touch and deep cleaning with a cleaning of classroom spaces between students use. We've had restroom protocols and automatic soap and towel dispensers installed. We have symptomatic waiting rooms separated from other nurses' areas where other students might be coming in. We have hand cleaning and sanitizing protocols and sanitize and sanitizer, excuse me, is available inside and outside of classrooms. We have directional markings in all of our hallways. All are required to wear masks. Limited outsiders enter the buildings beyond the main office. Appropriate spacing in the classrooms and at lunch. Appropriate distancing and protocols followed on our buses. Vigilant close contact tracing and protocols implemented by our nurses. And we have travel protocols. None of that will change. Moreover, we also work closely with the Cohasset Teachers Association and the Town of Cohasset to secure the funding for the acquisition of approximately 170 portable air cleaners, which are now in place in various learning spaces identified by Bala Engineering as needing enhanced air changes. Benefits of these PACs, and you can see one of that's the one of the larger ones there in the picture. It's in our middle school office. They they simulate a higher air change per hour, which the Chan School in Harvard indicated was an important factor in making sure that the airflow was appropriate in our schools and in our our spaces. They improve air quality and they reduce airborne contaminants. So those are all in place. Couple of other factors that I want to talk about, and this was, you know, referenced in one of the questions, is first of all, vaccination for staff, which is set to begin in February. I want to make a note about this, that I personally and as a as a district, we will do everything in our power to get the vaccinations happening for our staff as quickly as possible. I certainly was not happy that our state determined that educators would not be in the first responder category, category one to get get their testings. You know, I'm not a person who would value one one group over another in terms of getting testing, but I felt that was something that should have been afforded our educators for sure. I did write, along with other superintendents, a letter to Governor Baker asking for consideration to move them into that category one, or at least to move them up to the top of category two. We've also talked, you know, closely with Senator O'Connor and Representative Machino. And I know there are efforts to try to move that up. I can't guarantee that at this time. That's just where we are right now. And that's, you know, something to to consider as we as we move into this. But I will continue to do what I can to make that happen from my from my perspective. And then, of course, you have COVID-19 testing for staff that I want to talk about as we move through this in just a moment. So I did mention last time, a last meeting, I believe, the concept of pool testing and that the state has a pool testing program that we have applied for. I want to be clear on that. We've applied for it. And we've actually asked for a lot from the state in order to put it into place. You know, we do not have a tremendous amount of resources to do this. We have very limited manpower. And there are some requirements around this testing, although you can do it in in various groupings to do it for a particular building. And again, I don't want to be the one to choose one building over another. But if you are doing it for a building, you do need to have, I've heard 85, but I've heard more 100% of a building being tested. You know, which quite frankly, you need, you need the full participation to have, you know, accurate data and results. You know, the idea is to to figure out who may have COVID asymptomatic within the within the the public schools. And unless you're testing everyone, you're just not going to get accurate results. And I would offer that, you know, based on the amount of people who are proving to be positive in our elementary community, that we wouldn't have a tremendous amount of folks. But I think that there is some some absolute validity to having this ability to to test. But we have to face the facts. We currently only have two full-time nurses and full- and four ha- and four halftime nurses, one of which we added this year to our uh ESER funds in the district. Our town has one full-time and one halftime public health nurses. They are up to their, you know, necks, working with vaccination and uh and doing contact tracing for the entire town. We just do not have staffing to successfully complete regular testing at that scale. But again, we are waiting response from the state to determine what we will be able to be given to potentially make something like this happen. But um, I, you know, looking at it, it's not as practical an option as the one I might mention, I will mention in a moment. The cost, which isn't necessarily prohibitive, but I want people to understand that after the first six weeks, which would be afforded to us, the cost for our district, if we tested all students instead, that's if we're approved for the program. Um, the cost for our district, if we tested all students and staff would be between eight thousand and ten thousand dollars a week. Just so the committee is aware uh of the cost uh involved with that. Um, some other factors in involved with the pool testing. We need to consider a possible cost for follow-up testing. As I mentioned last time, the idea of pool testing is that you test groups of whether it be students or staff in groups of ten to twenty-four, they go out in a pool that pool is tested out in a um, in in a lab. And then we get sent back information if there's a positive in that pool. Then we have to figure out how we're going to test those folks in that pool. And then, of course, do all the contact tracing that's necessary within that pool, uh all the quarantining and everything that goes with that. But there could be a cost for some of that follow-up testing. Um, we have to also contin- consider transportation to the labs. All of those pool tests have to be transported to a lab. Um, that's also an additional cost. We also would have to secure the results in software that needs to be maintained and monitored. That's an additional cost, but more um, I would say taxing for us is the work consideration. The time it's going to take for someone to go through and do all that. And again, there's other major pressing needs for those people to be doing within our schools as well. We need to consider the work involved with contact tracing and the monitoring of potential positives of the pool, which of course is worth it, but it's it's additional work. And then we would need per parental consent to test and and supervision of those gathering samples. And I should, I should also mention that, you know, younger students sticking swabs within their nose is not necessarily the greatest social emotional situation for our younger kids either. Clearly, that's something you could practice at home. We could, we could get that, get students used to it. But it's not like putting on a mask, you know, it's it's actually putting something in your own nose. And for our younger kids, we, we would have to do that to them uh and for them. And that would be something that could be a bit traumatic in some kids, not a major thing, but something to consider. And some may think it's a major. So I, an alternative that I think is a, is a real possible route for us and one that I would advocate for, and I would actually like to get a vote um on today from the committee, is uh a partnering with a group called, we've looked at a few groups and we believe this is our most um. I would, I would say the group that we think we can work with the best and provides uh the most comprehensive sort of all-in-one package for us that we clearly need to do testing. This would be testing for staff. I'm very cognizant of the fact that vaccination isn't happening as quickly as I think all educators would like here in Massachusetts. So the idea of this would be to give staff the testing um until we have a scenario where our vaccinations are um are able to come in uh and we can get, you know, there's obviously a two-pronged approach. You get your first shot and then twenty-eight days later, you get your second shot. So that will take some time. The, this group called CIC, Cambridge Innovative Center Health, proactively seeks to help organizations who face obstacles with testing, which is where we fall. Uh, certainly, Kingham Public Schools is currently successfully utilizing CIC Health to test staff. Um, CIC Health can provide testing for our staff and utilizes an established protocol to securely deliver test results back to the person being tested. Within twenty-four hours, they securely report the results and then complete all of the contact tracing. Um, this is something that our staff would be able to utilize to be able to come in, do a, um, again, it's a nasal swab. Um, and that we'd be able to send those out, get those results back. In talking to the folks in Hingham, it's been very productive and successful for them. And like I said, I I would offer this as a, as a service until vaccination is complete for all staff. Um, the committee should know that it's forty-seven dollars and eleven cents per test. And that is for the whole package. So that is for everything that I've mentioned here in these uh, in these points regarding um regarding testing. Now, the test that they do is the molecular PCR test. So it's the sort of gold standard in in your uh COVID nineteen tests. It's not the, the antigen or the antibody test. Um, and the speed of the result is next day, always eighteen to thirty-six hours. And in talking to the folks from Hingham, that's been accurate. It's been very rare when they go beyond twenty-four hours to get a test. So, you know, a couple of factors that I really had to explore and that I had talked about on January twentieth is, first of all, is there an appetite for this in the community? And secondly, as we have some very stringent bus restrictions, uh, is our community prepared to uh work with those restrictions in order to get our, our families back into school? And then, of course, there are a lot of other factors like spacing, lunch, which I'll talk about as we move forward. But the first factor we had to figure out was, is there an appetite from families? So the question here was asked to Ausgood and to Deer Hill School, and we had a very large sample. You know, you'll see four hundred and twelve responses for Ausgood and near there for Deer Hill as well. Um, the question is, would you send your children back to school in person on March first, two thousand twenty-one? If distancing between students was reduced to three feet within the classroom and maintained at six feet when eating lunch? And it was a very overwhelming response. Um, ninety-two percent said yes, uh eight percent said no at Joseph Ausgood School. That's a, a pretty unanimous vote um when it comes to that question for Joseph Ausgood. So what would it look like? Well, in Joseph Ausgood, with all students present, there'd be a range of distance between three and six feet, but mainly three feet. Um, depending on class size and classroom space. We'll be utilizing both the caf- cafeteria and gymnasium for our lunches, just as we do now. Um, Principal Sullivan and Principal uh Farrell, feel free to jump in if you have, have thoughts on all this. Uh, I know you're here for questions too, and it's asked. Um, but right now, we do utilize our cafeteria and part of our gymnasium for lunch. Um, and the kids would maintain that, they'd continue to do that. We would have to add um add some sections. We'll get to that in a minute, but the, um, this is what a a typical classroom would look like. You can actually see the measuring sticks here showing the distances. This is twenty desks in a um, in an Ausgood classroom. Uh, we believe our highest number is twenty-two, but we believe we, we have figured out a method to fit all of the kids in every room uh in Ausgood. So that's, that's productive. And then there are some spaces that we do need to problem solve. And that's something that we will work forward and why I'm, one of the reasons why I have a preliminary plan here that I'm asking for approval of. This is the lunchroom that I mentioned. So here we have students on the right at the top in our cafeteria. There's spaces. Um, the Principal Farrell, can you, can you comment on what those three empty desks are again in the picture to the right?
Yes, and in the picture to the right, three empty desks are, those are our um food allergy desks. So you'll see there might be a child in one of the desks, that's a child that has a food allergy. And those four desks that are up front are continuously cleaned um by different solvents that are used from the rest of the group. So that's where the students who have food allergies do sit in every group.
Very nice. Thank you. And you see the um, the space on the um left here is what our uh gymnasium looks like currently and what it will continue to look like. Remember, we'll be moving into the better weather, although March is certainly not up for grabs in New England. But uh our, our physics classes will be going outside when they could, and when they couldn't, they'd be doing some lower impact activities uh in that half of the gymnasium. The one change is that our lunches will have to be staggered uh to afford, afford this from ten fifty to one twenty. Seats will be assigned as they currently are. So that's the shift we would need to make for lunch uh at Joseph Ausgood. Um, staffing implications to bring our students back, really, we, there are none. Uh, we will be able to run the in-person model with our current staffing at Joseph Ausgood School. Deer Hill School, pretty similar. Would you send your, your children back to school in person March first uh with three feet in the classroom, six feet at lunch, eighty-eight point five? Um, and uh, yes, and eleven point five percent no. And again, the response rate was very high. So at Deer Hill School, um, Deer Hill School, the rooms are a bit, a bit smaller than the Ausgood School, but we still will be able to um, to keep them within three feet. Again, uh, depending on the class size and classroom space. We'll talk a little more about that in a minute. We'll be utilizing the gymnasium for our lunches. This is a shift. The Deer Hill cafeteria will be emptied and utilized for PE when needed, similar to the system at the um Ausgood School. And students will continue to be spaced out at a six-foot distance. This is what a typical classroom would look like. This is twenty desks, twenty-one, twenty desks in a um, in a Deer Hill classroom. And you can see the spacing. And this is, thank you, Principal Sullivan for this, a little, little map, a little graph of uh what our our uh gymnasium would look like with um, you can see the usable space. And then we have a stage with some more usable space should we need it. Um, same lunch schedules, lunch schedules won't change. And uh, the same seats, well, different seats will be assigned, but seats will be assigned as they are uh now. And that's important for, you know, a lot of reasons, contact tracing being one of them. This is not, they're not going to be sitting on these mini, mini golf pads. That's just, that is a CEF grant, by the way, but this is a, just a, a picture of our gymnasium. So you can get a sense for the, the space and you can see the stage up there. Now, this is an important one. The staff, there are some, there's one really important staffing implication at um Deer Hill. Uh, we will need to add an additional fourth grade section. Our fourth grade, our class sizes are larger. Um, I believe the largest is twenty-three. Am I correct in that, Principal Sullivan?
It's either twenty-two or twenty-three.
Okay, and I know there are a few classes, there are five classes, correct?
Yes, yes.
Go ahead, you go ahead.
I was just going to say, there's currently five classes at every grade level and fourth grade is the only grade level that has classes that exceed twenty.
That's right. And um, it unfortunately, from a spacing point of view, there are classes, there are a few of the classes that are above twenty that would need um, would not, we would not be able to fit them in their current spaces. And even looking at spaces around the building, that's the first thing you do, right? Is you think of where can we put these folks? It, it does, it did not compute that we could move um staff into bigger spaces. They just aren't the spaces uh to have that, to have that. So what we'd be doing is, we would have to, we believe, we'd have to form a new section uh using our established placement, established placement process to form a, a balanced class. Can you talk a, a little bit about that, Principal Sullivan? Do you mind?
No, not at all. So a um, what we would do is what we typically do in May for the coming school year is classroom teachers would come together and um with input from other staff that are involved with these students. And we would look at peer friendships, we would look at balancing the classes academically, we would look at, you know, gender ratios, and we would create a new section with all of those factors in mind. I feel, you know, really comfortable that our teachers have built strong relationships with these students and and know how they work and who would be good learning partners and learning friendships, which is, is sometimes different than soccer field friendships and and partnerships. Um, and, and then therefore would create a, a new section. Um, and you know, another point, this might be the time to make too, is that with this shift, we're combining cohorts. And so every classroom in the building is going to be kind of establishing a, a new classroom community and a little bit of a reboot of of that as, as they get to know each other as a, as a whole unit. And so I, I really feel that this will be um a pretty seamless experience for any students impacted by this.
Yeah, and again, I know you echo this, but you come back to our staff, our, our staff, our fourth grade staff is amazing. And um, you know, we do believe that uh they will make the, this new section feel comfortable. Um, we will figure out a way to do it, as Principal Sullivan said, uh very much prior prioritizing connection. We recognize the importance of connection this year in particular. Um, but it is a necessity from an operational standpoint. So I want to make sure that everyone understands that. Um, there is a possibility we could add this new section without adding to current staff, but we certainly have to go through the process of um posting it. Should the, you know, the, the plan be approved and, and looking for that section. And then, of course, communicating to families regarding this and working with them as we make that transition. Thank you, Principal Sullivan. Um, so another question that was sent to Ausgood and Deer Hill families is, is simply about our transportation. As you know, we have um, right now, eight buses moving uh in the district. Six buses in our um, that are in, in the Town of Cohasset, two which facilitate our Boston students. So in order to suc- successfully get our elementary students PK to five back in person on March first, we would really need to keep our current transportation route and bus occupancy. Given the distancing requirements for buses have not changed, and again, means you can fit one per seat. It comes to about twenty-six on a bus, but you can put family members together in a seat. That's a helpful one for us. Um, but it still doesn't open up the ability to extend it to many more people in our writing right now. Um, so the question is, are you willing to maintain the current hybrid busing schedule, requiring parents, guardians to drive their students on the days that they would have otherwise been remote? In other words, if you're in cohort A, you're staying with your busing when you're, when you would typically be cohort A, even though your, your son or daughter's coming in every day, and then on the other day, you're um, you're driving them. So we did this in a couple of shifts. We first of all wanted to get an overarching idea of what the answer was, and then we drilled down a little bit to get specific names. I'm happy to say we think we can do it right now, but I want to talk about some contingencies with this. So he- here's the answers. So again, the answer is, the first, the first answer is yes. Um, almost fifty percent of the folks said yes, and another over forty-five percent said my child doesn't take the bus. In other words, they're uh inside of two miles or my kid just doesn't take the bus right now. And that, as you can see, shows a very uh high rate and, which is quite frankly, what we needed to possibly make this happen. So that, that's productive. Thank you for that. And then at Deer Hill, very similar. Yes, is forty point five, and then an even larger percentage, they don't take the bus right now. Um, all this boiled down to the fact that we believe we can do this, but I'll just read this to you. We're going to be keeping our, if we, if this is approved, we're going to be keeping our current bus routes, our bus drop-off and bus pickup times. We will make the adjustments that were requested in our follow-up survey, which means there are some people that are going to need the, the um, the bus when their sons or daughters were remote, and we're going to afford them that. However, as space on buses is limited, if there's anyone who has signed their child or children up for a bus that is able to drive their child or children, please email our Director of Finance and Operations, Susan Owen. That's S Owen at Cohasic K twelve dot org, because we really do need to be mindful of it. It is tight, and uh that is a, an operational obstacle that if we can't overcome, you know, we really, we really do have a problem. We are going to continue to operate a separate elementary bus and middle high school bus for our Boston students each day. These buses will run on the current drop-off pickup times and will utilize the current bus stops. One note I want to make about the, the staff testing, I know this is an elementary presentation, but that was for all staff. That wasn't just for um, our Ausgood and Deer Hill staff. I wasn't clear on that. Anyway, I regress. I'll go back. So drop off and pick up. Well, you know, as you probably would realize, we have um limited buses, limited amount of kids on those buses, and we have a dual drop-off and pickup time. The traffic needs to be accounted for. First of all, we also have drop-off scenarios where we're taking great care to keep our students moving in safely. So the first thing I'm going to implore everyone about is just patience. Just be, understand that we're gonna work this through, just as we do uh everything uh regarding COVID, but we're always going to prioritize um safety within any model that we advocate for. but we're always going to prioritize safety within any model that we advocate for. Because of the added traffic that'll be present with a dual drop off and pick up, with limited resources, we're advocating for some staggered drop off and pick up times. And before anyone gets, let me explain what that means. So drop off, bus drop off will be at the usual time for both schools. So if you're taking a bus, the, this drop off is going to stay the same. Okay. If you're dropping off your child at Deer Hill, cohort A will drop off at nine oh five and cohort B will drop off at nine fifteen. And as you, you know, the cohort A from Deer Hill is the same cohort A at Osgood. So we will move cohort A drop off to nine ten and cohort B will be nine twenty-five. Pickup, bus pickup will be at the usual time for both schools. Walkers and bikers will be dismissed after bus as usual. Cars at Deer Hill cohort A will pick up at three fifteen and cohort B at three thirty. And just to follow, cars at Osgood will pick up at three twenty and cohort B at three forty. Should be, we believe, enough time to do this safely, to spread it out a little bit and to keep the flow of traffic moving in, in a safe way for everyone. This will implement as we move through, and you'll see it in a timeline in a minute. But basically, families will be given a color-coded last name sign identifying their cohort for their windshield, which should be utilized during drop off and pick up at both schools. This happens at a lot of different districts. It happened in the district that, that my, my students are from. And I think it's something that will help us as we organize this safe pick up and drop off situation. So some other logistics, and you know, we can go back to this when we get questions and talk about it. But some of the logistics that, you know, I know people are interested in hearing about is, how will students be kept at a safe distance when moving around the school? Remember, we do have our directional markings in the hallways and tell a lot of faith in our teachers being able to keep students distant and moving in groups. I've been very, very impressed with, you know, they call them zombie arms of other schools or, but they're able to keep a distance between the elementary students and do it really well as they're walking down the halls. How can snack occur? Well, snacks will be eaten outside whenever possible by all of our students. Not only is that good for socially distancing, you know, obviously you need to remove P P E to be able to do a snack, but it's good for the kids. And when it's not possible to go outside, we're going to have to schedule the use of the cafeteria and gym space for snack. Another question I know will be, will be on the minds of some folks is classroom materials. We believe firmly we have sufficient classroom materials for all of our students. I know that our math kits that were sent home with our, our elementary students will have to be, have to come back. And that will help us with, with our math program. But we, we, we believe that we do have sufficient classrooms, I'm sorry, materials for all of our students. How will we serve children who need to quarantine? Now, I want to make a little caveat on this answer by saying, if we did have a scenario where a full class and teacher were quarantined, all right, then we potentially could move to a remote learning situation during that quarantine period. Accepting that, if our students need to quarantine, we will keep them moving educationally with asynchronous work as we would for any of our students who are out of school with an illness. And I want to be really clear with that and upfront, because I don't want families thinking there's a, a different model for them when we do need to quarantine our students. How will special education be scheduled and delivered while maintaining safety and social distancing guidelines? Obviously, it'll be a little different, but the implementation and implementation of special education services for our students will still follow all of the safety and social distancing protocols. And we're going to meet all of the required services outlined in our, in, in students' I E Ps. So although, you know, we already have moved a lot of our special education students back into school, in many cases, five days a week. We know there'll be some adjusting, but there's no reason we shouldn't be able to do this and keep our distancing and, and our safety requirements. And then I just want to make sure that everyone knows, if you didn't already, we're, we're not alone in this. There are many districts around us, if not all, because this is what we're charged to do. We all recognize the importance, and I know everyone does, by the way, of getting students in safely if we can. Hingham, Hall, Hall has, you know, had the, the luxury of having more space in their elementaries. And they're able to do four days almost from the beginning. Hanover just recently got a vote to do this. Noel's looking strongly at it. Middleborough Marshfield just got a vote to start February twenty-second in person. Pembroke, I believe, has been four days in person in their elementary since, I believe, November. Situates looking at it. Ducksbury went in on February first with their K to two and is looking forward to bringing the rest of their elementary back on March first. And then, you know, Waymouth is in talks to, to try to do it as well. And, and they're all at different places and there are other districts too. But I just wanted everyone to know that we're not going out on a limb alone here, where, you know, we're really trying to, to do what everyone is doing. Just a little bit on the timeline, and this is what the timeline is, is that, you know, clearly we sent out the survey that I just went over the results of on the twenty-first of January. You're hearing my presentation now. Hopefully it's not too long. Families of fourth graders are going to hear about our new section, and we're going to be discussing the impact and all that. And Principal Sullivan and team will do that. February twelfth is the date for that. And then during vacation, we're really hoping to move in with the setup of classrooms and lunch areas. The twenty-fourth, which is our school committee meeting, will have a final vote. If the committee so, so thinks we should move forward with the preliminary plan. And then twenty-two to twenty-six, the final preparations, as I mentioned, will be made for drop off and pick up, including the, the pickup placards that'll be distributed. And then we would begin March first with our full in-person classes for P K to five. And then just my references. So lot of information there, but let's face it, there's a lot to consider and our students are, are very much worth it. And, you know, I, I, this is, this is, this, this is more to, more to be discussed, there's more to be solved. But I turn it over to you now, Chair McClellan, for any discussion that you'd like to entertain and questions. And thank you for the opportunity for, for us to present. And I know Principal Sullivan and Principal Farrell will be here to answer questions as we move forward as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you for that very impressive presentation, Dr. Sullivan, and for the many, many hours of, of thought that went into that very deliberate presentation. Principal Sullivan or Farrell, if you have anything to add as it relates specifically to your building, I think it'd be probably timely to do so now. And then once you have done so, if you choose to do so, you don't have to. I'll invite our C T A president, Robert Erlinson, to, to make a statement. And you can probably promote him to a panelist at this point, Dr. Sullivan, just so he's here. But, Principal, I guess we'll just go by, we could go Osgood first. Principal Farrell, do you have anything to add specifically related to Osgood to Dr. Sullivan's presentation? Again, you don't have to. I'm just giving you guys the opportunity to, if you'd like to.
Okay, thank you. The presentation was very thorough as far as looking at where, what some of the concerns are of the teachers, what some of the concerns are I, I myself might have in working through those with the, the placement of classrooms, the desks in the classrooms, looking at lunch, how we'll do lunch scattered with recess, snacks. And again, Dr. Sullivan pointed all those out throughout the, the presentation. A couple of the other things that we need to think about is students' materials. We don't have lockers. We have cubbies in the classroom. So it's all of those, those little pieces that may not seem important when you're thinking about bringing the children back. But those pieces are pieces that we need to, as Dr. Sullivan said, continue to look at. And what's best for, where do we have our, our youngest students putting their items? And if they're sitting at their desks, then hopefully the weather will improve. You know, taking them outside for walks, for mask breaks. So each of the items that he mentioned for both schools, but specifically my concern is for the Osgood, just planning it all out and being very specific as when we move forward, what this is going to look like for everybody. But I, I think that it was all very well spelled out. So, thank you.
Thank you, Principal Farrell. Principal Sullivan, do you have anything to add relative to Deer Hill?
I think I echo Principal Farrell's comments and agree that the presentation was really thorough. I also, you know, just want to recognize that this really is a three-way partnership between, you know, the, the staff and the students that have a responsibility for, for their role and also families, and, and we're really appreciative of that and the different perspectives that all of those roles bring to this. I know that the, the need to open a section in fourth grade is probably a little anxiety-producing for parents, but I do feel I addressed that earlier, and, and I really feel confident in the school culture and community that we have as, as a school and the, the notion that these students are all of our students. And I really think that we can, we can manage that successfully as well. And, and I speak from experience. My first year teaching, I began a classroom in February with students. It became a two, three multi-age with students from ten different classrooms. So I really do try and, and walk the walk whenever possible, and it just so happens I can in this case.
Thank you, Principal Sullivan, and, and thank you both again for, for being here. Before we get to Mr. Erlinson, your statement, I'm so sorry, Dr. Scollins, who was also obviously heavily involved in the planning of this. I don't know if you have anything to add, but I certainly want to give you the opportunity to add anything if you'd like to. I'm so sorry for, for getting to offer you that opportunity earlier.
Thank you so much. I don't feel slighted at all. These people are the people that have been working so hard, Dr. Sullivan, Principal Sullivan and Principal Farrell. So they've said it all, so I will. Let you move.
Okay. So with no further ado, in, in line with what Principal Sullivan mentioned in terms of it's a three-way partnership, we turn the meeting to our Cohasset Teachers Association President and Science Teacher in the middle school, Robert Erlinson, Mr. Erlinson.
Yes, great, thanks. So first of all, I'd like to thank the school committee for the opportunity to share with you our membership's thoughts on the critical issue of students in K five returning to full in-person learning. I mean, the past five months, five months have been extremely challenging. The teachers and staff of Cohasset Public Schools have created entirely new learning models for students using new and exciting tools and strategies. And while these efforts have been successful, nothing can replace in-person learning. As we struggle through the worst part of this pandemic, we can see the light at the end of the tunnel in the form of, of vaccines. The vaccine changes everything about in-person learning for students, families and teachers. The invisible threat of the COVID nineteen virus has been with our school community for almost a year now. The possibility of the vaccine in the near future is the hope we have needed. You know, ninety-five, no, it's ninety-eight percent of our K through five members reported that as soon as the vaccination schedule is complete, they are a hundred percent safe. They feel safe that they will return to full in-person learning and not have any concerns. So that's a huge number. And the hunger in our membership to get back to what we do, what we do best, you know, is palpable. And I also want to take the opportunity to thank Superintendent Sullivan and the committee for signing under the letter to Governor Baker, calling for educators to be advanced in the schedule for vaccinations. We want to thank the town of Cohasset for inviting staff members, members to pre-register for the town's program as well. It's our understanding that, that the membership will be part of the phase two vaccination starting this month sometime. And so Cohasset educators eagerly anticipate a return to in-person teaching for all students. And that being said, we have a number of safety concerns, and the superintendent has been kind enough to address some of those here today. As I go through some of these here, I'm kind of going away from my planned statements here to kind of a, a, address some of those here. I know in the beginning of the year, we had issues with the three-foot state guidelines working for all our buildings. So it's, it's good to see that you have a plan for three-foot guidelines in the Deer Hill and Osgood that was not aware that that would work at the beginning of the year. So it's interesting to see how we can get all that in there. I think the proof's going to be in the pudding as we get all the, the kids back in there. We also want to address the risk and probability of an increase of exposure to in-school positive cases. Students at the elementary level are constantly moving, trying to keep them safely distanced is an ongoing concern. We're asking the school committee and district administration to please be aware of the fact that as close contacts and contact tracing efforts continue, a large number of students and teachers may need to quarantine, and this could result with, with less contact with teachers eventually as, as, as entire classrooms might need to, to leave. I think the concern here has to do with, it, it's really difficult to educate an elementary school student maintaining a six-foot distance. With the hybrid model, the ten students in the class around there, it, it's, it's been relatively easier to get around and work with students on a one-on-one basis without having to be exposed to, to the students over a longer time. So the concern is with, with the larger amount of students in there, that this could possibly result in more contact tracing issues. Another concern here is with the food. So, and you pointed out the, the snack time, hopefully getting outside more. I think as we go through with the, the actual implementation of the lunches and snacks, we'll, we'll see what issues there might be with that. We think a lot of these concerns, probably we don't even realize will be the problem until we start getting into it. You already mentioned the busing issues, which again, a lot of moving parts, scheduling concerns, special education services, the shared materials. I think a lot of this, the concern here is that there's so many moving parts right now. We're concerned about choosing a arbitrary date and trying to force it into that point. But we would really like to take a deliberative process to go through and make sure that all the, the re-entry is, is done in the best way possible that doesn't collapse upon itself because of, of things we haven't even pursued yet. Also, finally, we'd like to bring to light the unknown number of students and families that might not want to take part in the full return. And the superintendent's presentation was like eight to eleven percent. Is it the plan that the, these students are all going to enter TECA at this time? What's, what's the plan for those students? We're kind of curious to see what will be with that. But above all things, I mean, teachers are eager to see their classrooms full of the students. The Cohasset Teachers Association is looking forward to working with the town to receive the vaccinations and are ready to engage in the problem-solving necessary to address these issues and get our students back in the classrooms where they belong in a safe and successful way. I think more than anything else, as I saw your timeline for, for this, I, I didn't see where the staff members are, are, are being involved in these discussions. I know my conversations with the elementary staff, their big concern is, you know, they're the ones who who are experiencing this and know where the, the pitfalls are. Do we have a plan for involving them in these levels so that, that they, their experience and their knowledge and their expertise can hopefully prevent some of the issues that were, that are definitely going to come up because we can't foresee everything? I guess that's the, the main concern I think we have out there. I do want to thank Superintendent Sullivan for the, the, the testing program he's, he's promoting there. We'll talk as a union as well, pending your, your approval on that and see what, how that's received. I think that should be fairly well. But more than anything else, I want to thank you for letting us voice our concerns and, and we really look forward to hearing the discussion from, from you and the town.
Thank you, Mr. Erlinson, and, and for your continued zealous advocacy on behalf of the members of the faculty of Cohasset Public Schools. Unless there are any specific questions for Mr. Erlinson before he goes, what I, what I want to do is ask the committee for sort of a consensus vote to go right to the public comments to address those. Are there any questions for Mr. Erlinson? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Erlinson.
Thank you, Bob.
Have a nice night. At this time, as I mentioned, I'd like to go right to the, the public comment, and I don't want to do that without the school committee's permission as a whole. So if we could just take a quick roll call, a vote of aye would be in favor of going to the public comment now or the discussion from members of the community. So we'll do a roll call vote on that. Mrs. Caleri?
Aye.
Mr. Kearney?
Aye.
Mrs. Mar?
No.
Miss St. Ange?
Aye.
Aye, Craig McClellan. So that motion passes, and we will, we will turn to the members of the community and their questions. I did mention there were two very early on, but I thought they related this, so I, I held off on them, and I will start with those. Mr. Christopher Allen, who I cannot remember, but I think lives on Pleasant Street. He didn't write his address. He said, and the plan, the middle high school and high school into class full-time. Dr. Sullivan?
Sure. Well, again, we, we are looking at needing to stay to that three-foot distance right now. There's no give on that. And right now, we, we are at that with half our students at the middle of the high school. It's kind of as simple as that. It doesn't really afford us any opportunity to do that as long as those guidelines are in place. And you saw, you know, what we have to do at Deer Hill and to make that happen. So it's, it's not easy at the elementary. We have small classrooms, but it's, it's not possible. High school, that's really, there's not much more to it, and you know, that, that's kind of where, where we. High school. That's really, there's not much more to it. And you know, that, that's kind of where, where we are right now. If that changes, we can have, so if the requirements change for that, we can certainly have more conversations regarding that, but. There, there hasn't been any give on that.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to.
Sorry, Kurt, can I, uh, I'm sorry, Craig. Uh, can I make a comment about that actually?
Go ahead.
Yeah, it's just, uh, folks in town have been talking to me as well because I have students in the, um, high school and the middle school and. You know, it's definitely, it's, it's a space issue. Um, and, and I know that. Have we looked around town to possibly. Maybe as the library, the music circus, uh, the community rooms. To be able to maybe even just like take the senior class maybe, um, to, you know, we have to spread it out basically, but the seniors basically have. What until May, um, when they get out of school? So we're looking from March to May, correct? Is there any possible way that we can communicate with the town to try to figure out a way to get some space? Cause I think, uh, I, I, I looked at the library and, uh, you know, I think that could maybe handle a hundred seniors over there and. Have that like the, the senior high school for the last year because, you know, we really want as much as, you gotta remember, this is their, this is their time to shine. Class of twenty twenty-one. They want to be around each other and, um, you know, and maybe we can dive in this as a community and come up with a way because. You know, one person isn't going to, you know, solve all the problems. And Dr. Sullivan, we love you. You know, you've been trying to solve so many problems. You know, it's just, it's tough on you and I, you know, I just welcome the community to come up with some ideas to, you know, get these kids back in school because. We all feel it. We all want it, you know, um, and we see with our, with our kids and, um, you know, maybe that's a possibility for us to look at. And I think, you know, we're looking for ideas. So, um, if you want to email us or text us or communicate with us, we'd love to hear from the community. I just wanted to make that statement.
Yeah, I could just say, um, thank you, uh, Paul for that. And I know that, you know, Principal Scott here, no one wants. His students or students to have more opportunities than, than Principal Scott, certainly the seniors. I, I know. You know, we're all, we're, we're all right in that spirit. Clearly, there's just practicalities regarding it. It doesn't mean we shouldn't explore. I, I really appreciate that. There's just, when we, we looked at that in the beginning of the year, and again, everything's different now. The data is different. You know, we've lived some of the protocols that we didn't know about. But we, I appreciate, I just want to say I appreciate where it's coming from because I know we, we all feel that. Um, so thank you for, for your advocacy.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, yes, Mr. Kearney, thank you for that point. And I just, I, I did want to add, I mean, you know. Nobody's back full-time yet. So we're trying to take this a step at a time and, and right now we feel like it's, it's, it's. We're most able to do that at the elementary schools, which is why we're, we're, we're looking at that. It's not that, you know, I don't think the district leadership is, is not trying. To do whatever they can. I think we've maintained from the beginning that we're trying to maximize in-person hours whenever we can. But, uh, you know, at this point, it looks like it's, it's, it's something that is, uh, most, uh. You know, available to us at the elementary schools, which is why we're considering that and trying to roll that out at this time. So that's, that's, you know, I, I, I corresponded with a. With a middle and high school parent, uh, you know, who asked similar questions and it has a, you know, it's a very relevant concern. But, uh, you know, right now with the spacing, the square footage just doesn't exist in those buildings. So. That's from Mr. Kearney, that comment is, is well taken, you know, and some, something I'm sure that we'll continue to look into, but right now we're just trying to focus on getting the elementary school kids back in because we think. It's possible and Dr. Sullivan and leadership has put together this plan relevant to, to that particular issue here. So moving on. Unless any school committee members have anything else to add, please jump in because we, we all do from time to time with these comments. So. Okay, Megan Berry of Eleven Tad Lane, uh, has asked, uh, has Cohasset received any word back from the state regarding whether they will. Send vaccines to the town so the teachers can be vaccinated. If so, is there a timeline available?
Yeah, um, Ms. Barry, sadly, there, there isn't a lot of, um, apparently vaccination. Materials getting to the towns. Uh, there's very limited supply. I don't want to speak out of turn, but the number is, is for me kind of shockingly low, uh, and pretty standard. So they're, they're clearly advocating for those, um, larger centers. Like Gillette, for instance, uh, for people to go to, but we also have to wait our turn. Uh, as educators and right now we are behind, uh, in line, uh, the seventy-five-year-old, um, citizens and above and then. Sixty-five-year-old citizens who have, uh, pre-existing conditions. Then comes the, the educate, the group that we're in, which is, which includes, you know, the educators. So, um. No, um, I can't even speak to the exact timeline right now except being told that it's going to, it's going to start sometime in February, but. I want everybody to remember that, you know, with the, the, I believe it, the Moderna, um, and I don't know what it is with the other one, but. You know, it's, it's, it's a shot and then it's, I believe, twenty-eight days later that you're supposed to get the second shot. So. This is a process and there's going to be a, you know, it's going to take some time. I, I would again advocate for local distribution of these vaccines. Cohasset is really ready to do this and if anyone out there can help us persuade the powers-to-be to allow Cohasset. Those vaccines, sign me up. I'm right in line with you because we can do it quickly. We do things in schools and mass, uh, groupings all the time. But I, I don't want to speak out of turn because I really don't know all the, the complications that. Go with this and I know there's a lot of people trying to get things out safely. But I, I just want to, you know, to that question passionately advocate for, uh, local, uh, distribution of the vaccine. We can do it. Very quickly, um, and this wouldn't be so much of an issue for anybody.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Uh, next is, uh, Sarah McSweeney. She asks, uh, when are you planning to share your comprehensive plan to get students back in full-time in-person learning? I am hearing there is concern around spacing issues and want to see specifics around how you evaluated the utilization of the physical footprint of the middle high school. There needs to be more transparency on this topic. If this is the last barrier to get our students back, we need to have a comprehensive review conducted immediately. By the right resource and would like to know who is conducting that engineering effort on our space.
Well, I would take, I would take, um, you know, sort of guidance from the school committee on how, how detailed you want, uh, the planning. I mean. You know, clearly we, we know the, the, the spacing we need to put in various places. So i- i- if indeed the committee is requiring, um, some sort of a more comprehensive engineering. Blueprint for this, then you know, that would be a consideration that I would take into account.
Next is, uh, Christopher Allen again. Uh, he, he states or asks, can whoever is controlling the questions, please sit so we can see all the questions. He's referring to the questions that are posted from the public. After each meeting, I have been on, parents have voiced concerns that they had a question that was not answered. This would allow attendees to help hold the committee accountable. To all questions. Uh, I did answer that, uh, publicly in writing to him saying that I most certainly to a hundred percent certainty ask all the questions that are posted. But, uh, he followed up and asked why they can't see them. So perhaps, I don't know, I'm not the system administrator. Perhaps there's some setting that allows attendees to see. Questions on Zoom. I don't know, but it is a question that I'm sure we can answer and get back to Mr. Allen with more specifics on if we consult with perhaps Lisa Radden.
Yeah, I don't believe you can do, I don't know how to do it, just to be quite honest, um, on a Zoom webinar. Uh, I don't think there's a way and, you know, it would be up to the committee in that regard anyway.
Mr. Allen, you can, uh, I would, I would, I would email the director of, uh, of instructional technology. Uh, that's Lisa Radden. And, uh, her address is old, R, L, R, A, D, D, E, N at CohassetK12.org. L, R, A, D, D, E, N.
Chairman McClellan, I did just Google it. Um, and it is a possible setting. So the option is there within.
There are certain settings that we've enabled and certain settings we haven't and, uh, it's not something I can do right now. But clearly, you know, if the committee so wishes, we can have that setting available, uh, going forward.
Sure, let's do it. I know there's been issues with settings before, um, you know, in the meetings and we've resolved those. So, um, you know, thank you, Ms. St. Ange for. Consulting the Google wizard for us and.
He'll love Google, right?
And if it's possible, there's no reason why we wouldn't do it. We're certainly not purposefully shrouding or hiding any, and other questions from anyone. Um, next is, um, Ms. Kim McAdam of forty-one Pleasant Street. She asks, or states, could Dr. Sullivan address the much higher transmission rates for the United Kingdom and South African variants? Without pooled testing in our schools and genomic, I don't know, genomic, if I'm, I'm saying that right or not. G E N O M I C.
It's genomic, yeah.
I learn something every day. There is no way to assure parents and at-risk community members, in parentheses, grocery store workers, for instance. Close parenthesis, will be safe. These variants are very recent, are, are a very recent risks. That your pediatric study does not address. Also, how will one hundred and twenty-four students per grade walking hallways and using bathrooms and lockers be safe?
Well, I guess I'll start from the back there. Um, maybe Principal Sullivan and Principal Farrell can talk a little bit about. Uh, lockers at the elementary to start, uh, uh, and what's going on with those. Principal Sullivan and Farrell, maybe go Principal Farrell first. You kind of addressed that. There are cubbies. And we're going to have to look for alternative, um, ways to have students store materials, whether it be in a basket or whatever it is. Which is going to have to be creative and think outside the box with that. Is that fair to say, Principal Farrell? I'm answering the question for you, which I shouldn't do, but.
Keep going, it's fine. Um, one of the things that I, I had mentioned before was it, it'll be really important to look at. We don't have coat rooms that we can use. What materials can we use and getting the teachers involved in, um, as Mr. Erlinson said. Having them say, here, this is a great idea. Have you thought of this? In kindergarten, for example, we use laundry baskets and the students keep their items in laundry baskets. Right now, um, just so all their items are together. If you've been in, uh, early elementary school, you'll notice that the worst time of year for materials is from December until March. Because we have mittens, gloves, we have hats, we have boots, we have snow pants and that's just what one child brings in. So we will have to look at and, um, you know, I'll have to have hopefully discussions with the teachers, their ideas where this goes. And as far as the signage in the building and we have, uh, six feet marked off, our lines will get pretty long. Just working with the teachers as far as when they go into the bathroom, um, taking the children down to the bathroom, how does that look? Those are all things that I feel very strongly that I need the staff to say, okay, this, this is a great idea. This is, this won't work. This will work. Mrs. Sullivan and I, Principal Sullivan and I have been looking at all different avenues of things that we need or that we think we need for the staff. But getting their input will be huge, um, and just looking at where we can go with certain things. So that would, that's my best answer is just, we're going to have to really dig deep into what this looks like.
Sure. Yeah, I know you've started those conversations and those, you know, continued conversations are obviously vital and, and, you know, part of the reason why. You know, this is a preliminary, um, vote on a preliminary plan. Um, thank you, uh, and Principal Sullivan.
Um, locker shouldn't be an issue. We have them currently color-coded by cohort and, um. You know, actually teachers are already thinking and sharing ideas and we're having those conversations as well and, and a teacher, you know. Asked about the, the lockers and, and we kind of talked about it together and agreed that. We, we can keep them in their col- current color-coded cohort model. And, uh, and we just dismiss kids that way to the lockers. It's been very effective. At our age group, we really haven't had congestion in our bathrooms. We have a system, um, by class with little Velcro markers. So we know who's where. Um, I don't anticipate that will become unmanageable with larger sizes. Uh, I know the number was referenced about a hundred and twenty-four students or something like that. Our largest class size right now is a hundred and twelve. That's grade four. Um, our other classes are, grade levels are under a hundred. Um, so we're running at significantly smaller capacity than we have been. My first year here, um, our largest class size was over a hundred and thirty. So, um, you know, so we, we, I feel that with our directional signals. And, and things like that, um, that we can, we can navigate this.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I, I think we're, you know, clearly the, 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 uh, desires to go to the. You know, the restrooms are going to double because you have more people there, but you know, we're, I think we're very in tune to, to, to make that. Operationally successful.
And to add one more piece, I think the staggered arrival and dismissal also, I mean, our hallways are empty, um, in the mornings and at dismissal. Just the way we've been doing it already and now we're just kind of stretching that process out. So I anticipate that it will be similar. It'll just be a little bit longer so that the staggered, um, start and dismissals, uh, will really speak volumes in terms of our congestion.
And, um, to address the first part of the, of the question about the, um, I believe it was South African. I can't remember the other country you referenced and. What was it?
The United Kingdom.
United Kingdom. Um, you're right. The, um, the study that I showed does not address that. Um, and just like any other. Piece of information that comes down the road and when we're given information about how to protect ourselves from that, uh, we'd follow that. All of this is a balanced view of risk. I've said that from the very beginning. It's the importance of getting our kids back based on what we can provide for safety. And we have data now that, that shows that, you know, with the current situation, I, I believe we're able to, to mitigate that risk appropriately. But if there's no information that comes my way in our way, uh, we'll consider that. And just as we have in every single situation. Where there's been, um, a, a, a particular need to change our model or to, to pull back, we will do so. So, uh, I can't address that right now, but I, I don't think anybody can because we don't have the information out there regarding that. So thank you.
Okay, next question is also from, um, Mrs. McAdam at forty-one Pleasant Street and hopefully Mrs. McAdam doesn't further expose my limited reading abilities. With an impressive medical term.
Yeah.
She states that, uh, three feet is not the CDC guideline. Could you acknowledge that?
Yes.
DESI is not a scientific slash medical organization. They are respected educational policymakers, but are not in a position to dictate what we as a town should be doing when confronted with a red category of transmission and variant speed. Without six-feet distancing, six-foot distancing, minimum in parenthesis, you are essentially willing to put teachers and families. And community members in parenthesis at risk as the vaccination rate nowhere near the needed rate. So I think that was more of a statement and asking you to acknowledge that three feet was not the.
Well, no, I, I, I believe I did say in my presentation that the standard, the, the recommended standard is, is six feet, but. I, I did accurately say that the American Academy of Pediatrics says that three feet is a minimum as, as. And DESI, uh, cites that. Um, no, I'm not, I'm not going to stand here. I'm not standing, not going to sit here and tell you that. You know, that six feet isn't advocated by the CDC. I mean, that, that is what the close contact, um, uh, standard is. So again, I'm presenting data to you as a school committee and a, and a community to consider. As we consider the balanced risk of getting our students back into, into place. I, I, as I said earlier, I, I do acknowledge that the timeline for vaccination of our staff is not. Even close to as aggressive as I'd like it to be. Um, but yet I still stand, I still, I'm not standing, I still sit here saying that I, I believe. It's an appropriate measure to move, uh, our, our students back. Because of the regression and the social emotional issues that, uh, can come from, um, not being, not being in school. And, uh, it's about our students and about what we can provide for our students if we can do it safely. And, um, that's, that's where I'm coming from. I'm not going to stand here and tell you, uh, anything that, uh, goes outside of that.
Okay, next is, uh, from Carol Fawn, uh, of fifteen, Dr. Sullivan and team. This is a terrific effort and evidence-based. As a fourth-grade parent, I'm curious about the potential new class slash teacher. What's the sourcing for the potential new teacher hired from existing, existing staff, ESPs, et cetera? Also, if the, is the position, if the position is hopefully approved, will this position carry over to fifth grade?
Wow, um, so I guess the first part of that, um. Yeah, we, we, right now, it would be a long-term supposition. The question is, do we need additional staff? We have a lot, we have some situations happening in the district that we, we have a lot of great educators. We have great educators who are in supportive roles. We have great educators who are in, we, teaching roles. I'm always hopeful that some of those folks can move into a, a teaching position if that's their desire to do so. We've had a lot of luck with that because Cohasset, I think, is an excellent district that, that promotes from within a lot, a, a lot. So there are some potentials out there that would, you know, we have to follow the proper process of posting and all that. But there are some potentials that we, we might not be able to, we might not have to add additional staff. However, this would be a long-term supposition. And if it did require adding it, that's what it would be. And about moving over to the next grade level, that's a, that's a question that we'll have to, to solve as a, as a, as a group. I mean, clearly that grade level is a little larger than the other grade levels at Deer Hill. So if the scenario is, and it's a good, it's a really good question, because if the scenario is in the fall, that we still need to be at this current spacing, then we're gonna have the same problem. So we would be advocating for, for that addition. You know, however it may be articulated, but we'd need that in order to get our students back. So that's something that, as a team, we do have to consider for sure, no question. But again, I can't, I can't look that far right now. You know, I can think about it, but you know, we don't, we just don't know where we're gonna be at that point with the vaccinations happening and, and everything. There's just a lot of factors.
Okay, next is Katie Florrick of one-twenty-one Doane Street. As a cohesive public schools' parent and a Hingham Public Schools' employee, I have valued the staff testing and have been very pleased with the CIC program. That, again, the program that you identified in your presentation, Dr. Sullivan. So I think that's more of a comment than anything else. Moving on to the next statement. This is Victoria Fine. I do not have an address. She states, thank you, Dr. Sullivan, for such a thorough presentation. I have two of my three children, grades kindergarten and third, at a different school. And my older child is at CMS. If there is a place to share best practices from other schools, I am happy to submit ones we experience. For example, the students in three classrooms at my youngest school do not have cubbies but hooks. And the school gave each child a laundry bag to keep their personal belongings separate and not touching. There are many creative solutions. This must been in response to the issues surrounding the, the storage, the crowded storage.
Yeah, I, I would, I would absolutely encourage that, you know, encourage sharing, share with me, share with the, the elementary principals. Really, the, the emails that I've received from cohesive family, families have been really helpful. Even the, even the ones that are somewhat oppositional to that, where I'm coming from have helped. So I, I really, you know, obviously do it in a nice way. I'll try to answer the same way, but that, that information's great. And please, we're, we're always looking for best ideas. And if there are great ideas out there, you know, let us, let us know.
Next is from Diane O'Leary. I don't have an address for Ms. O'Leary. She asks, has there been discussion of asking CEF or Community Donations to fund N ninety-five masks for teachers? To the extent that is something actually the teachers' union is interested in to help staff feel more comfortable or even more comfortable pre-vaccine? If someone is not comfortable with three feet compared to the six, the current six-foot distancing?
Yeah, those are certainly matters we can discuss. And I, I, as I, I've said, I look forward to more discussions and, and that would be in collaborations. And if that is something that is of interest, we can certainly, you know, look into that. That's, that's a, I understand that.
Next, Ms. Sarah McSweeney just followed up with her address because she had omitted that before, fourteen Summer Street. So that we noted for the record. Next is Mr. Christopher Allen asks, can you petition DESI for a waiver?
I, I don't believe that there have been any waivers granted for under three feet distance. I, I don't think that's an option for us. But Mr. Allen, I will look at that just to see if it's even possible. Let's say we would do it, but I, I don't believe it's even possible, just to put it out there.
But we, we have explored that in terms of the busing and they, they indicated that there would not be any loosening.
Oh, no, yeah, we did. No, I, I don't believe there's any, any avenue to get a waiver for that. There isn't for the busing. The busing, by the way, the answer we're getting is that'll be looked at in, in the spring. So this isn't a, it's, to my knowledge, not a possibility, but you know, I, I don't claim to, to be able to say I've, I've petitioned them. But I, I, the way it was, way it's been put to all of us in the superintendent's talk often is that there is no petitions available for that. You know, certainly the transportation is in the same vein, I think, as the spacing within the classrooms.
Mr. Allen also follows up with, has anyone leadership pushed back on DESI regarding this? So I think he's stating, if you haven't asked, why haven't we pushed back as a town?
Well, I mean, I, I'm, I wanna try to follow guidance that's out there. And look at, they've made it, made us look very locally at data. And that's what we're trying to do right now. You know, is look locally at where we are with data. I, I appreciate the passion with this, but no, I haven't significantly pushed back on DESI to try to get our students within three feet of each other. No.
Okay, just one minute. Thank you. Next, Sarah McSweeney. We stated her address a few moments ago. Follows up with, following on to the comment that we can't figure out. Following on to the comment that we can't figure out is not a solution. If you need a working group to help solve, you should ask for some assistance to drive to a solution, not say it can't be done. I am happy to help sponsor a working group. We can't leave the sixth through twelfth grades coming up short. I guess she's saying that we said we can't figure it out in our sort of.
Well, we can't, we, you can't get any more kid, you can't get all of our kids back within. And you can't get any more kids in our, in our, we're at three feet. So you can't get more kids in the building. That's not really a problem that is solvable. But, and I would absolutely, you know, for, for any issue that someone has a great idea on, we're all ears. We're, we're really trying to be creative. And I, I don't at all mean to be dismissive on that. But that's really the, the conundrum we face is that we can't fit anybody else in the building. At our middle and high school unless we break that three-feet barrier. So I, I apologize if I was dismissive. I didn't mean to be, but that is the problem.
We're not dismissing at all. Next, next comment is from Mr. Ron Norton of Mohawk Way. States, so what is your plan to improve the situations at the middle and high schools? There's not been one mention of these students in your entire address tonight. And I think there's been a lot of questions now about that. And I think that you've addressed it multiple times, Dr. Sullivan. But if there's anything new you want to add to that, I, I think that many. Middle and high school parents are understandably anxious about this, completely understandable. But it's really a square footage issue. If there's anything else you want to add, I mean, I, I think there's been a number of questions that are basically the same about the middle and high school.
No, I, I mean, I, I appreciate where it's coming from. I really do. It, it is, it is a spacing and square footage issue. You know, and you gotta think about. The educate, the, the, the model you're able to offer as well, like moving to various buildings throughout the town, which I don't. I don't see a possibility in that right now. But I, you gotta also worry about like what that's, what's that gonna look like for them educationally? Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry, I don't have more on that. I just, right now, it's a, it's really a square footage issue.
Next is from Ms. Courtney Ness of two-ten Lambert's Lane. Thank you to the committee for the research and for being thorough this evening. Today, the CDC made the statement that vaccination of teachers was not necessary to safely return to school. They use words such as return as early as possible and quote outweigh the risks slash benefits, end quote. I ask the CTA to take this into consideration. Our community is small and we can work together to achieve this. Cohasset has an opportunity to achieve approximately a hundred and fifteen at one hundred and six, March first. Thank you for that comment, Ms. Ness. Next is from Jacob Harrell. And I don't believe, nope, there's no address submitted by Mr. Harrell. He asked, can we expect that you will enumerate a transparent and objective criteria to use in determining when community spread slash transmission? Is such that it is no longer considered safe or advisable to continue in a full-person format?
Well, we're asked to, to look at that and to also balance it with our spread in the school buildings. And the transmission in the school buildings. So that's what I'll continue to look at is, you know, a balanced view of both of those.
There's a comment by Bill Greener saying, I can see the questions here, all right? Or right? I'm not sure. Maybe he was just responding to that issue about the, being able to see the questions. That's all it says. Mr. Danny Iandoli. No address provided. He states, I joined the call late, so I may have missed this. Once COVID is over, is it safe to say that we have a system in place for remote learning during snow days? So that we don't have to extend the school year because of missed days? So if we have snow days in twenty-twenty-two, we will go to remote learning, so there are no makeup days. Oh, he did provide an address, eight Short Street. Apology.
Well, Mr. Iandoli, you did not miss that. I did not mention that in the presentation about, about that. But there's more conversations to be had with the Quest Teachers Association regarding that. We've been amenable with the, looking at it as an option. Clearly, the state, for now anyway, has offered remote learning as one of the possibilities. When we have an inclement weather day or a day that's, that comes our way. And as I've said from the beginning, we'd have to look at the particular situation. And I believe the Quest Teachers Association would also agree with that. I mean, if we have a scenario where we can prepare and we can get our ducks in a row to provide an appropriate learning experience remotely. And the power situation in town is, allows us to do that, then we'll try to do that. But when we can't, we can't. And if that adds a day, then it adds a day. But, you know, clearly, we want to keep the continuity of learning moving if we can do that. And so we will use that as long as the school committee allows and we can continue agreement with our teachers' association on that. We'll continue to use it in our bag of tricks, so to speak, as we move forward. I, for one, really like it because I don't like going to school late in June. I don't think that's good for the kids. However, you know, you gotta make sure it's a, it's a quality day. And that it at least advances the continuity of learning that you have happening when the inclement weather event occurs. That's kind of my answer there, but thank you for that. We could have a whole meeting on that, you know, just that. There's a lot, there's a lot here.
Next is Ms. Kim McAdam followed up with a statement saying the UK variant that she mentioned or referred to in her prior comment is in Massachusetts now. Next is Ms. May Carpenter of ten Hill Street. She asks, can you please talk about the decision on the March first start? It seems that it would make more sense to aim for April first, when more teachers are likely to be vaccinated and the students can surely spend more time outside. How likely are you to consider this?
Well, I can appreciate that. I can appreciate that sentiment and, and that, that, that thought process. You know, right now, I'm looking at our data right now. And again, I'm looking at a balanced view of risk. And the need to get our kids back as soon as we can do safely. So March first is what I'm advocating for, but the school committee will be able to look at that, make some determination in regards to that as well. So, but I do respect what you're saying.
Next is Bridget Bearden at nine Cedar Acres Lane. States, thank you for your presentation and balanced risk approach. Could you address the expected consequences of regression at emotional educational levels? Could you provide more detail on the educational risks posed to our students when they forego in-person and what that means for our community?
Well, I don't, I appreciate that. I don't have a tremendous amount of research in front of me, but I, you know, I, I know that. Well, I know it from a few levels. I know it from the, a, a personal level, seeing my own children going through it. Seeing how their effects and reactions are to when they're in school and when they're not in school. I know that, you know, the, I, I don't have the data to, to support this, but I know it's, I can find it because I've seen research on it. That suicidal rates are higher than moving up in, in the country. You know, Cohasset by and large might be sheltered from things like food insecurities. But it's, I'm sure it's there. We also have situations where, you know, some, some students need access to services. That they just don't have unless they're in school. The, the, the whole socialization effect that school provides for kids is just being totally thwarted by having them in that environment. Never mind what it's doing to families. You know, the family's ability to work. So it, it's, it's really affecting all of our students on a social emotional level. It's termed, in terms of regression. You know, we, we need, we're looking at ways to figure out our regression, but quite frankly, I'm concerned. In a, in a, in an educational system that's very strong, that we're potentially not moving through the curriculum. As comprehensively as we have in the past. I'm very aware of the major undertaking it is at the elementary level. To attend to the younger students one-on-one in front of them. I'm not a huge fan of congruent learning at the elementary level. I, we, I know Dr. Collins agrees with me on this. And I believe my, my principals agree. And I, I just don't think that's a good model for our elementary kids. And I'm concerned that unless we have the kids in front of us, that there will be regression. I, you know, Cohasset, many, many families have resources that can lessen that. But I don't want to make sweeping generalizations regarding that either. So those are really the data points that, that concern me. And the, the amount of regression we're gonna have from online learning i- is yet to be seen. But I, I have concern for it. And I, I do want to get our kids back. And I, I believe that a lot of our educators feel that way too.
Okay, I have a few more questions and then we're gonna proceed to the school committee's deliberations. Ms. Barbara Stefan of two-hundred-and-sixty Jerusalem Road. States or asks, by code, elementary classrooms are usually required to have more square footage per student. In parenthesis, I think this is the case in Massachusetts, close parenthesis. This could be part of the issue. But creative solutions would certainly be welcome to help get middle and high schoolers back for more in-person learning.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Stefan, for that. I think that we will certainly consider creative issue, creative solutions to get the high schoolers and middle schoolers back. Sarah McSweeney states, as this is a huge open issue, it would be helpful to see how you have carved up the middle school, high school space. Including the senior cafe, gym, and our auditorium, any available space. I'm kindly requesting you make the blueprint available for your community. I also think we should at least evaluate off-premise, off-premises spaces. Like library, town hall, and teen center. So I, I, I mean, I, I think a lot of that was included in the initial reentry plan and, and to, as to how you were dividing up the space, Dr. Sullivan. But, but go ahead and please respond however you like.
No, I mean, we, we've spent a lot of time and effort trying to make sure we have a unique middle school and a unique high school. And, you know, we're working within those spaces. It's, it's just, we, we are, we are utilizing those spaces. You know, we're utilizing half of our gymnasium and half of our, and our whole cafeteria. Remember, we have shared common areas for two schools. We're not separate schools. So we share the cafeteria. So lunch is happening pretty much all day. You know, we have, all of the shared spaces are being utilized by both the, the principals. And the, the staff have done an amazing job to carve out with all the, all of the, you know, the, the obstacles we have. With spacing, you can't fit as many kids as you used to fit in these spaces. That they've done an amazing job with co-mingling buildings here to try to create an educational situation that works. But our rooms are tiny. They're just not big. And our students are big at, at that age. And the spaces are just not plentiful. You know, we're just, we're not suited for this type of, of spacing at our, our middle and high school. We're just, we're just flat out aren't. But, you know, I appreciate that. And, you know, as far as sharing blueprints, we haven't gone so far. Chairman McClellan is to draw up blueprints for every single room and to put, you know, the spacings in. But quite frankly, there really wasn't an opportunity to do that because we weren't even, we were barely fitting the kids we have now in there. And that was the problem. It's like, well, how much more creative can we be? We, we can barely fit 11 desks in a room in some cases. That's a problem, and that's at three feet. So this is really a tough one. And if I sound frustrated, it's all, it's only because, you know, we've worked really hard to try to, try to plan that out. And, you know, it's just a hard, it's a hard situation just because of the square footage.
It is a frustrating situation. I was just referring to not blueprints, but photographs of the learning spaces in your reentry plan. We had photographs of the different building spaces and how they were set up and the cafeteria eating spaces, things like that. I mean, that, that was included. And so that's all I was referring to. I, I
Yeah, yes, there are.
In your presentation for the fall reentry. Okay, so at this point, we'll open it up to the school committee's deliberations. Let's start in reverse order. Mrs. St. Ange.
What a pleasant surprise. I was barely ready to unmute. I have a quick question, and pardon me, Dr. Sullivan, if I missed it. But with the, the plan for teacher testing, did you mention frequency of testing in your, in your proposal?
So, Lydia, are you talking about the CIC?
CIC, yes, correct.
Well, we would do weekly testing. That would be the plan, and we'd have so many tests per week. We'd, we'd have to articulate what that is. And the reason, one of the reasons I like CIC and what they had to offer is that they're very flexible and they're mission-driven. And I mean that in a good way. Their, their mission is to, to solve testing issues so that they weren't, when we were asking questions like, well, do we have to commit for six months to this? No. Do we have to commit to so many tests? No. Could we do this as a diagnostic thing? Potentially, yeah. So there's a lot of things that we're not doing that, but there's a lot of things that we could, we could do with this company, and they're physician-based. So that, that is what I like. But, but on the surface, to answer your question, it would be weekly testing for staff.
Okay, excellent. And my other question is just kind of to follow up on the vaccination question. I guess I just want to kind of clarify because I have had a chance to think about this perhaps, I don't know, differently as a school committee member, and I'm also a teacher waiting for my vaccine. And people are concerned about the March 1 date. You know, March 1st is, is our ideal situation, right? But like, if vaccines get delayed and, and negotiations with the CTA are pending on that, that could change, correct? I mean, that is, like, we're hoping for March 1st, but that is possibly a changeable date. I just feel like that's a date that has come up in many questions. I just want to make sure that we're all understanding start dates in the same way.
Yeah, that, I mean, again, I'm proposing a plan here. And, you know, I've talked about my view on where we are with the data regarding transmission, lack thereof, the amount of people that we've had in our community contract COVID and the regression and social emotional difficulties. So I'm advocating for March 1st. However, the committee can certainly make, you know, the, the learning plan decision on that. And the decision really is, you know, are we, are we going to move forward now? Are we going to move forward at a later time? You know, so I, you know, I certainly, I'm just trying to do my part in advocating for a particular day, which I feel is, again, we've always tried to do this with everything we've done, a tenable timeline that we can get some of the answers solved. And we've tried to be very, you know, we, I mentioned it to the CTA before the January 20th meeting. We, you know, where we looked at some major obstacles that needed to happen in the community. We looked at and researched spacing, and we need to continue that, have more, more and deeper conversations with staff members. And, you know, as that timeline indicated, there's other things that need to happen before we have that final vote on the 24th. But if I don't mention it now, then people won't be able to prepare. So that date is really what I'm advocating for, but it is the purview of the school committee to make decisions around that.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, I just feel like that kind of question kept coming up personally and then here in a public forum. And so I just wanted to, I guess, have that conversation out loud here. I, I just, I want to thank you because I feel like the, you know, the report felt very thorough. And of course, we do have people who are not comfortable going back, but a majority who is feeling comfortable. And I'm just very heartened to hear that, you know, the teachers with 98%, of elementary teachers said with a vaccine, they'd be comfortable going back, which is something I understand because I am in their same position. And, and you're close to kids all day. So I just, I just think that this is a really, I hope just we can continue to have productive conversation because I think it's so important to have kids back at school and teachers and families and our whole community understands the value of that. So, so thank you for working so hard on this.
No, thank you. Thank you for the perspectives. They're, they're important. That's an important, you know, thought for everybody to consider.
Mrs. Mar, thank you, Mrs. St. Ange. Mrs. Mar.
Thank you. A follow-up question on the CIC testing, Dr. Sullivan. Is that for all staff every week or is it for the elementary staff?
This is all staff. This is something that, that I want to try to commit to for, now, I should say, it's, obviously, it's voluntary. So there, there may be some staff that don't feel that they want to be tested or that they need to, or it's, it's up to that purview. But we would commit to a certain amount of tests per week. And that could adjust, excuse me, as needed as we, as we go forward. And again, that price point is for everything. It's for the, we'd have to work out a system with them, but they'll be helpful in our currying of the, of the tests to them. But everything else, you know, in terms of reporting and safety, it's, it's very professionally done and tried and true, very, very research-based, and, and the Hingham folks really appreciate it. And I think it's the best one that I, I have researched a few. I've looked at the Solskjaer Hospital Program too, which is, has some productive capabilities. And that was at some place at some, some schools, Rockland, for instance, is utilizing it. But I think the CIC, based on the full packaging of the materials, is best for us.
Okay, so that, that would be probably $1,000, like.
I don't know that it, it would depend on the amount of, right. And again, my, my hope is to, and I don't mean this in an insulting way, but I really want to offer this until the vaccination period is, is done for our staff. That, that's the, that's the idea. It wouldn't be forever unnecessarily. That is my, my feelings on that anyway, that it would be a way to get us to that point that would help staff.
Okay, thanks for that. Um, I don't know if anyone else saw this, but the Catholic schools in the greater Boston area have gone back full-time since the beginning of September. And they have, there's about 110 schools within their dis, their district covering multiple towns, 30,000-plus staff members and students. And they've had three cases of COVID transmitted in the schools. And so that doesn't even calculate on a percentage, three out of over 30,000. And I could be short on that staff and student number. So there are success stories locally. And it's interesting because the schools cross multiple towns with students from multiple towns. And, you know, with different rates, you know, red, yellow, gray, whatever. And they've been able to figure out a way to, to, to have students back full-time K through 12 and, and keep transmission rates low. So I saw that report, and I thought it was very encouraging. I'd like to say that I, I'm very, I don't know what the word is. I'm very proud of the fact, Dr. Sullivan, you, you and your team put together a plan of what we can do and what is, what we're capable of doing to get our students back into the classrooms. And it's not filled with what we can't do. It's about what we can do. And no one has been able to foresee any of, any of the situations that have arisen in this pandemic in the last 11 months. And I think as, as a leader, as a team, and as a district and a town, we have tackled each obstacle or each roadblock or each setback with thoughtful consideration for all parties. And at the heart of every decision is what is best for our students. And what's best for our students is getting them back into the classrooms. And if we can start with K through five, and then to Mrs. McSweeney's point, maybe, maybe we take another look at the middle high school. And, and may, maybe there's, there's something else we can do. But to get our most vulnerable students back in front of their teachers is of paramount importance. And I, regarding, you know, staff input from how Principal Farrell and Principal Sullivan spoke, I have every reason to believe that their plan is to go back to their staff pending our vote here and say, okay, this is unique to our building. What are your concerns? You know, just because it wasn't on a timeline, I never for one minute thought that they would not discuss how to move forward with this with their staff. And I, I think we have an incredible staff. We have a dedicated staff. I believe that they want to come back and teach the children, and I respect their concerns. But the data shows that this is the best group to go back with. With regards to, you know, questions on expected regression and social emotional learning, I think, Dr. Sullivan, you have as one of your goals, and I believe members of your team have as their goals, looking at our achievement gaps. Let's remember, this all started last spring with our students. And we have recognized that when they began classes this past September, there was some remedial work, find out where did they end up and where do we need to begin? And we weren't all beginning where we should have been on September 1st. And recognizing that and putting it as a stated goal for yourself and for your team and for us, I think speaks to that. And I hope the community knows that it's front and center for all of us, that we feel it's, it's very important in, in determining, you know, the, the regression in our learning. So I just want to thank you and your team for this great effort. And I, I think, I think it's, you've done a great job.
Thank you very much. And absolutely, you know, to hear, hear more from the staff is going to be vital. I should say, the, the CIC, the group, they are also one of the groups that works with Gillette. So they're, they're a major factor in the testing happening at Gillette. I actually went with my 87-year-old mother earlier this week to Gillette and went through it with her. Very well done and really efficient. And quite honestly, they were very kind to people who were very nervous and scared. So it's nice to see that, and that was a kind of a resounding, you know, approval for me on CIC as they were the ones spearheading it, or at least one of the major groups. So thank you, Ellen, for your comments and your praise. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mrs. Mar. Mr. Kearney?
Yes, thank you. I also want to echo what Ellen was saying is the can-do attitude. I love it, and thank you. And thank you to the teachers. I mean, you know, and also the kids. We'll talk about them in a second. You know, hearing the kids, we have three children in the school system. And hearing the teachers, just good morning, everyone. And, you know, it's just, it's, it's great. And, and it's, it's, it's nice to have. You know, would I like to have my house back, back to myself? Yeah, probably. It is, it is something that I think as Cohasset as a community that we've had this can-do, not only from Dr. Sullivan, but Craig McClellan, I got to thank you. You've steadfast on this, and it's something we all believe in 90%. I mean, that's, that's, that's incredible. Marshfield is doing it. I think they're going to be open on the 22nd. I think that we were due diligence. We did our due diligence, and we figured that give the kids a back a week because they'll be coming back from February vacation. So I think that was a good idea. I thought the timing was good on that, so I'm happy to say that. Also, very concerned about the social and emotional learning aspect of it. I think it's so important, especially for our younger kids, to have that one-on-one with their teachers. That said, I just want to speak to the middle school parents and the high school parents that it's on the agenda. And, you know, I, I just believe no, no good, you know, no idea, every idea is going to be taken in. And we all have emails, and we're all available to hear any, any, all ideas because they're all on the table. Because this is going to pass. This is something we're going to learn from, and we're going to get our kids back in school, and they're going to have fun, and we're going to make it better and better, better for the future. And I got to just say, with everything in place, I just feel really confident with this community that we'll be able to get through this together. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you for those hopeful comments, Mr. Kearney. Madam Vice Chairperson.
Um, thank you. I want to, first, a couple of detailed things. I think it was Victoria Fine who suggested sharing best practices that families are aware of. And I think it's a fabulous idea. And I want to reiterate something that I've said before in these meetings. I think that the absolute best thing about our district and the leadership that's running it is that they want input, they want suggestions, and they sincerely mean it and consider them when given. And that is, that is something I remain very grateful for. And so please, for those of you who are listening, who have thoughts and information to share, please know that is sincere. So thank you for that suggestion. I think it's a really good one. The other thing that comes to mind as we're hearing from middle and high school families, I, I feel compelled to remind people that there is a school facilities committee that's being populated to consider what facilities our kids are using now, what improvements could be made to them, and to look at that in a holistic sense. And I think we, to Paul's point, to Mr. Kearney's point, we will get through this. We have the great gift of having a very competent, capable leadership team to steer the ship. But let's not, let's not forget lessons learned during this experience. And let's try and use what we've learned to Mr. Kearney's point, to continue to make this a better place for our children to be educated and for our great educators to work. I want to advocate for making sure that this additional fourth grade teacher be a fully licensed teacher. I want to make sure that the kids who end up in that new section have great opportunity. I think this brings me to my last point, and I think Mrs. Mar touched on this. I think it's important to remember, I, I think we'd be hard-pressed to find someone more risk averse in this situation than I. I am not someone who takes any of this lightly. I am very, I remain diligent and dedicated to making sure what I can control in this situation is controlled and what I can't, I, you know. It's a tough time for all of us, as we know. Each child is different. Each family is different. The situation in each home in Cohasset and in each home of a student who attends Cohasset Public Schools is different. And it is those of us who are parents, it's our job to advocate for our children. And for those of us who work in Cohasset Public Schools and who sit on the Cohasset School Committee, it is our job to advocate for all of our children. And that is why I feel compelled to say that as we move forward as a district and remain committed to looking at all of our work, top to bottom, side to side, through a lens of equity, it's important that we give It's important that we give the students who need this time the time in the schools in person. I only say that because I had this opportunity to look at Dr. Sullivan's extraordinarily thorough presentation. I spent the earlier part of my career as someone who did, you know, a lot of very detailed work. I'm a detail-oriented person. I have a deep commitment to uh exploring all of the pros and cons and um all aspects of logistics. I was an event planner. I planned really large-scale events with lots of input from lots of different stakeholders and lots of different, you know, I, I remember planning events for the Democratic National Convention when it came to Boston and having to deal with the Secret Service and the State Police and the Boston Police, and it's like that is, I felt like I was there were no boxes left unchecked that I could see in this presentation. It weighed the transmission rates within the schools. It weighed the need for the students who are struggling. It weighed the different scenarios for, you know, ho- hallway traffic and, and, and school uh classroom setup. I just, I really, I feel really lucky to be in this district and I feel really lucky to be on this committee because I feel like we are in very good hands. That said, um, we're not taking about tonight on getting kids in classrooms on March first, right? We're, we are proceeding deliberately through this process. Okay? And so at this point in the process, I feel really confident that we are in very good hands um and that we are proceeding in the right direction. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Ashley.
Thank you, Ms. Colery. Um, I'll be fairly brief. I know there's other um, there's other uh, there's a few other, other comments that I just want to, it's an impactful issue, so I want to make sure we get to them. Um, I'll just sort of state my position is that, uh, you know, I think that uh, this has been difficult for everyone and uh, I think at some point we just have to be confident in our ability that we've learned to live with this. And uh, you know, there's been a lot of guidance and protocols and rules um and PPE developed by, you know, uh, you know, many public agencies and public officials and health professionals and scientists and uh, you know, people that can read the word genomic. Um, and uh, we've, we've, and we've deployed them and, and we've implemented them and we've used them um in order to mitigate the risk. And that's what we're doing. We're mitigate the risk. There's no way to eliminate the risk. Um, you know, you, you could get hit by a car any day, but you look both ways before crossing, try and mitigate that. You know, you could be struck by lightning. You stay out of fields in a thunderstorm to try and, you know, mitigate that risk. You know, you can be eaten by a shark, but you don't go surfing in Nauset Beach in the summertime to try and mitigate that risk. Here, we've employed a lot of different things to try and mitigate the risk of spreading this virus that has uh absolutely devastated our society as we know it. And one of those things and one of the ways in which it's devastated society is that it has kept our children, uh, especially the younger children, but all the children from a, a very safe environment that's structured that they need in order to grow in a healthy fashion. Um, in a, in a healthy emotional fashion, a healthy mental fashion, um, you know, develop academically, but also physically, socially, um, they need it. And I think that it's incumbent on every single person uh in this meeting, every single person with any sort of uh position or interest in public education uh to see to it that the kids at this juncture get back in school as soon as possible because it is possible. And uh, and we know it's possible now and the numbers support that. And I think that a- as time goes on, we can see that, you know, we've, we've implemented these uh, these uh mitigating uh protocols successfully. Historically, as Dr. Sullivan presented, you know, the numbers are very much in our favor here. And yes, people have tested positive in our community. Yes, people have tested positive in our school district. But not the majority and not many. And uh, I think it's going to be, have to be presumed that people will continue to test positive. But I think at this juncture, I'm very confident in the protocols that we've employed. And I am um absolutely committed to the fact that the kids need to get back in school. And uh, I think that uh, it, it's, it seems to be uh the position of the committee as well, but we'll take a vote in a few moments. Uh, for now, um, I just want to um, I just want to go back to the uh, the, the questions from the audience that remain. There's, there's five more and then I'll ask for a motion. I just want to make sure that everyone is heard here uh tonight. Um, Jean Healy Dipold of Ninety-three South Main Street uh asks or states, "Thank you for trying to work through a hard situation." "Just a reminder, the town meeting is coming up and now is the time to start the discussion about budget and contingency planning for capital improvements, whether it be more buses, expanding temporary square footage appended, appended to the middle school and high school in parenthesis, like my child attended in Virginia, close parenthesis, roof ventilation and other safety enhancements, so we are not grappling with similar problems next year, including about the sixth to twelve, sixth to twelfth grade. This is particularly true if the vaccine is not as effective on the variance and the risk calculus turns out to be off if the kids go back full-time in March." Um, next comment is from, um, it's a question from uh Dawn Newell of Walnut Hill Lane. Um, she states and inquires, "It appears that many teachers do not agree with this current plan. They are advocating for waiting for vaccinations for staff. Can this plan proceed without their full support?" Well, um, I mean, the, you know, the continued collaboration with the teachers is an issue and um I think as we've seen, there are a lot of people that, that, you know, aren't in full supportive at this point, and as Ms. Colery has just stated, um, at this juncture, we're, we're voting to move forward um in our planning and our continued planning for March first implementation. But this today is not the, the vote of implementing. And uh, you know, we're just, we're just voting to improve this plan that Dr. Sullivan just uh presented. And uh, and to continue in the efforts to see, see to it that we can implement it on March first, but um you know, as far as the teachers go, and I think as Principal Sullivan stated earlier on, very early on in the, in the presentation is that, you know, this is a, this is absolutely a group effort. And everyone's uh, everyone's uh input and feedback and perspective is going to be taken. Uh, you know, we're not going to ever get to a situation where a hundred percent of the stakeholders here agree. So, um, I don't know. That's my response to that. Dr. Sullivan, if you have anything to add or anyone has anything to add, Mr. St. Ange?
Just think it's important to note that the vaccination of teachers is scheduled to begin in February and we are not talking about starting until March. So um, I do feel like that concern is being taken into consideration. We all will be finding out more information about vaccination, but like we can only make decisions based on what we know and what's been presented to us. And what has been presented is that the plan is to start vaccination in February. I really hope that happens. I think we all hope that happens. Um, if it doesn't, we have to adjust, but um, but I feel like the plan is based on that, that date and that num- that information.
Thank you, Mrs. St. Ange. I'd also just like to quote from the um, the director of the CDC uh stated today at a press conference, and I quote, "Vaccinations of teachers is not a prerequisite for safely reopening schools," unquote. So it's just a quote. There's a, you can Google it. There's a whole story on it. This just, this happened today. The CDC came out with this position, so um, I think that's fairly compelling too. But um, unless there's anything else in that particular point, we'll just move on because I, I, I do want to uh get to the vote. Um, Jason Earls, or excuse me, Kim Earls of uh Twenty-two Lambert's Lane uh states, "Dr. Sullivan, you're absolutely right. The regression we are seeing is palpable. He needs his friends. He needs social contact. They all do. I, for one, thank you for caring about the social emotional concerns of our kids. My fear of him falling behind mentally far outweighs my concern for him catching COVID at school." Next, uh Sue Greenbow of Twenty-one Ledgew- Ledgewood Farm Drive. "Have you considered leveraging a medical slash scientific advisor to help this committee understand the evolving variant transmission data and inform your risk analysis, especially with no sign of pediatric vaccine becoming available in the near future?"
Well, we do have a um, our school physician, Dr. Golden, who was instrumental in our opening and actually uh talked to parents and staff, and he is uh uh in, in, in consult, so he's someone we can turn to. And then, you know, we have our, our, our town uh medical officials as well. Um, yeah, I, I mean, these are all, but that's, that's important and has been throughout the process. Thank you for raising that.
And finally, uh, Karen Ketchapooty of Fifteen Ledgewood Farm Drive states, "Thank you for your continued efforts. Please advise if the middle and high school are meeting DESI standards as noted in December eighteenth updates. If not, how will these students' needs be met?"
Yeah, we're, we're actually, because of the, the synchronous model far exceeding it. Um, and you know, we were in the fifties uh in terms of the amount of live hours and clearly if we're, you know, a slightly below um the the standard of thirty-five at our elementary for uh synchronous and live learning, then, and we made a forty-seven or forty-eight hour uh average per two academic week s- uh student, a synchronous learning time, then we're at fifty-seven or sixty in our middle and high school. So, you know, that, that itself is um, we, we do meet that standard, I guess. Should, should have been, should have been a shorter answer on that. The answer is yes.
Okay, that does it. Unless there's any other follow-up comments from the committee, I would uh, I would seek a motion at this time uh to approve the initial plan as presented by Dr. Sullivan uh to uh to um send uh all the elementary school kids back five days a week, starting on March first, two thousand twenty-one, um pending final approval on February twenty-fourth. So again, uh, motion to approve the initial plan to implement full-time elementary school as of March first, two thousand twenty-one, pending final approval on February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one. Is there a motion of that effect on the floor?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Kearney. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Colery. All in favor, please indicate so in roll call. Mrs. Colery?
Aye.
Mr. Kearney?
Aye.
Mrs. Mar?
Aye.
Mrs. St. Ange?
Aye.
Aye, Craig McClellan. So, Dr. Sullivan, that motion unanimously passes. We'd ask you to continue your planning um with the intent to uh seek final approval for the implementation of full-time schooling for elementary school students on February twenty-fourth.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, there's also a vote that was requested by Dr. Sullivan on the um on the uh approval of the CIC um outsourced COVID testing solution that was presented during the uh, the presentation. What's the CIC acronym? Do you know Cambridge?
Yeah, it's Cambridge Innovative Center or Innovation Center. I, I guess I don't know. I have to look back. It's something, one of the two.
The outsourced, you remember it from the presentation, the outsourced COVID testing option, uh alternative to sort of the uh, not necessarily alternative, but it, but an outsourced uh COVID testing solution so that we can get uh the staff members tested uh weekly. Um, it was, I think, uh, what was the price? Forty-seven dollars a week?
Forty-seven eleven per test, which would, this would come most likely out of our ESAR funds.
Can you, can you just clarify what ESAR is?
Sue, you want to talk about ESAR? It's um, it's the, I don't forget, the acronym is escaping me.
Yeah, but what it is?
Well, no, it's the educational, elementary and secondary support. I don't know. It's, I don't know what it is, but it's a, it's the funding that the state provide, has provided us for uh various COVID-related expenses. And they have specific definitions for how we can spend this money. And this could potentially be a uh, a purchase coming from that. You know, s- six weeks of everyone being tested could cost us in essence of about forty thousand um potentially. And if we did, if we did a hundred tests and started with that, you know, I, I would estimate it would be about, it's something like twenty-three thousand or something.
It's, it's the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund?
That was too far off. I knew it was something.
You're good. Yeah.
Okay, so Dr. Sullivan uh has uh looked into this and is asking us to approve um the utilization of this uh outsourcing. Um, and so uh, I'm seeking a motion uh to that effect to approve the uh utilization of that uh outsourced uh CIC COVID testing.
So moved. Lydia?
Motion made by Mrs. St. Ange. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, was that Mrs. Mar?
Yes.
All in favor, uh, Mrs. Colery?
Aye.
Mr. Kearney?
Aye.
Mrs. Mar?
Aye.
Mrs. St. Ange?
Aye.
Aye, Craig McClellan. Dr. Sullivan, that motion unanimously passes. Uh, so please go ahead and uh do what you need to do on that front.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on uh to the next item in the agenda is the kindergarten registration update.
So actually, I'd, I'd defer to um the Principal Farrell, who knows a lot more about it than I do, and I didn't have her prepare for this, but um just a little update on where we are uh for numbers. Um, Principal Farrell, do you have that available?
Sure. Yes, um, we've been doing the registration, the evenings, the last two weeks. I'm very fortunate that the um, my team at the office has been able to take care of making people feel comfortable when they come in, do the registration. We've had a lot of feedback that the um, registration this year is much better than it's ever been. So I want to thank my team for doing that, making people feel comfortable. As of right now, we are at ninety-two students um that have, that have appointments to come in, register, will finish registering, I believe, next Tuesday. And with the ninety-two students, that does hold spaces um for our Boston students. And the ninety-two, then we have to have five, then we hold five more students for special ed. So we're hovering around ninety-seven right now.
Um, just a quick, is that, i- i- based on your experiences, that kind of where we typically are at this point in the year?
No, we seem a little, we seem probably equal to last year, but the three years prior to that, we're a little higher than we've been. Um, and I don't know if it's because we've, we've spread it out, so the registration has gone over five days, a couple of hours each day, whereas before we did two days massive um massive influx of people coming in. So I don't know if, maybe the last few years, people haven't registered until a little later. But this year, we, I, as I said, we're pretty impressed with the numbers that we have right now, so that's good.
Yeah, thank you and your staff for your efforts getting all.
You're doing a great job.
Yeah, you are as well. Thank you. Um, that's how, that's really it for the kindergarten registration update. At this point, I'm, I'm going to let um Principal Sullivan and Principal Farrell go if it's okay with the committee.
No, I'd prefer the uh, the principals stay here for the entire duration of the evening, maybe to.
You're going to wear them right down. Um, I really appreciate. I really appreciate your um, your time and efforts and uh uh being here today and everything you do. So thank you and have a wonderful night.
Thank you very much. Have a nice night.
Thank you both. And I will point out, Principal Scott was also here the entire, throughout that entire conversation to uh, to show his.
He was. I, I know Principal Mills uh had a uh graduate class, or I know he would have stayed as well. That was his intention, so.
You definitely.
The great team.
It was nice to have the support.
It is. Thank you, Principal Scott, if you're out there. Appreciate you staying.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Uh, Dr. Sullivan, does that conclude the superintendent's report?
I, I gleefully says, yeah, uh, yes, it does conclude the uh, the superintendent's report.
Okay, well, um, uh, just, just when we thought we couldn't see straight, uh, we have the budget uh report from our Director of uh, of Finance and Operations, uh, Ms. Susan Owen.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sure you're all wide awake, waiting for this. Just to, just to reiterate, yeah, we've been meeting ongoing um as an administrative team with school committee, with department heads. Um, as we stated, we, we came up with, you know, what we thought we needed as a budget. Um, roll of costs are approximately six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Just that alone brings us to a three-point-two-six percent increase. Um, and then we had a couple additions um and requests and changes um, which I, I'm calling tier two, which is another additional two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand. Um, with tier two included, it brings us to a four-point-three-nine percent increase, which is about nine-hundred thousand dollars overall. Um, in conversations with the town accountant, um, they're forecasting right now, based on the um preliminary governor's cherry sheet that came out, um, we were at two percent, we're now the, talking two-point-seven-seven percent, um, which is better. It's getting closer to where we like to be, um, not quite where we want to be. So we met today as an administrative team, um, we talked about the numbers, we talked about, you know, being conservative. conservative. Um, we talked about looking at areas that we could reduce if we needed to. Um, and then we talked about, you know, things that if we have to reduce tremendously, you know, where would we go? Obviously, we try to stay away from, um, staffing as much as possible. You know, we talked about, okay, we have empty positions that we haven't filled this year. Is, you know, is that something that we need to fill for next year? Um, they've gone back to the drawing board as a team, um, to look at the individual budget and compare, um, historically what their budgets have looked like over the last few years versus their expenditures. So by the end of the week, um, the administrative team's going to send in, um, what they think they could reduce if we needed to. Um, and we'll see where that percentage comes to. Um, the town's 2.77% is about 500, right now, the number's $573,304. That's, that's where we are today. Um, we're going, we have a meeting on Friday to talk about that, um, with, I believe, the town manager, town accountant, superintendent, and myself. Um, I'm not sure who else will be attending, um, just to go over their forecast, um, and what we can do to be creative. That's where we are as of right now. Um, 3.26 rule, it's 685, um, and they're offering 573. We have a shortfall of about 112,000 there. Um, we, we would really like to push forward with, um, the, the additions that we've asked for, increases in, in staffing that we feel are important. Um, but that would be another $236,000 that we have to find in cuts in order to meet that 2.77% increase. Uh, that number's not in stone right now. That's just the number that we have today. Um, I don't know if there's questions or input on, I sent out the line item budget. Um, Mrs. Marr and I went down, sat down and went over it, um, with questions and just updates that needed to be corrected. Um, I think that's it. I mean, unless, you know, we're trying to be creative. You know, we're looking at grants, we're looking at revolving, we're looking at the ESSCR money that's coming in, um, for next year. It's another 185,000 that we, we have just for one, one year. Um, so lots of ideas floating around. Just want to hear from the school committee and, and we talked about, do we, is this the year that we begin to reduce the full-day K fees? You know, or do we just, maybe it's not 50,000, maybe it's 25,000 this year, you know? So we, we talked about a lot of things today. Um, but I'd like to hear, you know, what, what the school committee's thoughts are as well, and, you know, where they would like to see us go with this.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Owen. Um, Mrs. Colery, do you have any questions?
I guess one question I have is my, if I understand correctly, we are not yet where we hope to be for funding, but also talking about reducing the full-day kindergarten fees. And I'm wondering how that worked in the context of your conversation, or if it was just an exploratory discussion?
It was exploratory. Um, it's just, just our rollover costs of the 685, and that's just to roll everything forward as is and not add anything. And right there, we're looking at 112,000, um, reduction.
That's at the 3.26% for rollover, which anticipates a, a call that's similar to what we have now.
Right. Um, I mean, the ideal goal is, you know, they, we can go back to the, the table as a team and, um, reduce supplies, materials, shift, shift some things to grant. Um, look at, you know, just look at our budgets more closely. What, what do we have to have this year? What can we do without? Um, that's why we, you know, I put on the, the additions as well, um, in hopes that maybe we can reduce in some areas and keep the additions. It's all, it's all, like you said, it's exploratory right now. Um, I'd love to say, you know, we want, we want all of it. I'd love to say we can have all of it. Um, it's just, it's a process right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Colery. Uh, Mr. Kearney?
Yes, first of all, Susan, I think this is great. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I know there's a lot of work that's been put into this. Um, and it's not easy. It's not, uh, you know, when you're talking about cutting or not adding things that we need to add. You know, this is something that I think that we all should be concerned about is, is, uh, not only as parents, uh, but, um, also to as taxpayers. I mean, it's, it's, it's something that, you know, it's all out there. Um, but I got to be honest, uh, every year it seems like we're just not funding our schools like we should. And, um, you know, I'm going to be an advocate for that forever. If it's not the buildings that we're not putting enough money into, it's not getting, uh, the teachers that we need. And, you know, that needs to be a consideration. And that, you know, that's not, that doesn't fall on the school. It falls with the town. And the town has to make some decisions. Are they going to continue not to fund the schools properly? And that's been the, that's been going on in Cohasset for a long time. As much as we like to say, you know, we're a community that, that, uh, continuing the commitment of excellence, we should. And that said, is that we need, we need to compete. I mean, we're, we're a small school district. I get it. Um, it's just, it's very disappointing to see us, um, you know, never get to that point. And I'm, I'm just hopeful in the future that more and more people get involved and come up with creative ways. And, uh, again, Mrs. Owen, uh, I, I want to, uh, sincerely thank you for all your hard work and, uh, and, and Owen as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Mrs. Marr?
Um, so, you know, the, the budget's going to be difficult. And, you know, for a variety of reasons, I, even last year at town meeting, when we looked at the five-year forecast, and we saw what the projection was for new revenue and, uh, for the town and what our 61% split of was from that, we knew that it was going to be a, a tough year, um, in, in terms of funding, not, not the incremental four, five, $600,000 that, um, we typically get. I think our best case, my guess is going to be, we might be able to get to the 3.2 from the town. Um, we're going to have to have it, have a decision from the town pretty soon because we're going to have to have a public hearing in March, um, and have a, have a, have a budget that we vote on, uh, that will carry forward to town meeting. I think from the town's perspective, and I haven't talked to Chris Senior or Don Pyatt, I haven't seen what their forecast is, but if you look at, you know, what happened in this town last year and is happening now, um, we're fortunate in the sense that most of our, uh, tax revenue comes from individual real estate, and the real estate market in Cohasset has been hot, um, very hot. Assessed values have gone up, so that's a good thing. But the, uh, restaurant and hotel tax that the town passed two years ago, obviously with major, facilities on the harbor, not even open for the better part of the last year, has caused a tax, you know, revenue shortfall, um, that you just can't make up, you know, with coffee from Dunkin' Donuts or Starbucks, um, because the, you know, those facilities also help had events, massive, you know, uh, wedding events and, and things along those lines. So, uh, as much as we want to say, you know, they, they don't fund us. We have to look at the reality, like we just talked about getting kids back to school. We have to look at the reality of town revenue source. It's not an unending supply of money. And I appreciate the fact that Mrs. Owens has, has asked the building principals to go back and really look at, you know, where, where they can, can make, um, switches for the things that we're advocating for now. Uh, there have to be some things that are falling by the wayside. I think I brought up at the last meeting when it was advocated for another .5 social studies teacher, um, because of the number of electives. Well, there have to be other classes that students aren't taking because they're subscribing to the social studies electives. And so are there accommodations and staffing? Because we're not, we don't have those, um, electives running that can be made. I, I, I don't presume to know, um, the subscription rate, you know, in all of the English classes or all of the math classes. But I, I just think that we have to look at things like that if we want to get the things that we think are going to benefit the students, um, the most and make those hard choices like we all have to do in our, in our own budgetary life. We just can't buy everything we want because we want it. Um, we, we have to live within the constraints. Um, I'd like to see maybe in the next rollup enrollment, that's going to be a big, um, how do I say it? Not a stumbling block, but, but it's going to be a big point of conversation as it always is with, um, the advisory committee. It's just common practice in school budgeting. And Mrs. Owen, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that, um, people look at enrollment, uh, look at school budget compared to enrollment. And we've, we had a period of growth for a while, and now we're kind of flatlining, I'll call it, up and down, you know, give or take 10 or 15, 20 students here or there. Um, and it's difficult to, uh, with some of, you know, the, my, how do I say it? It, it, it's, it's tough to explain the need for increased staff with it, with a flat or declining enrollment.
Ellen, can I, can I add something there? I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think it's a good point, is that unfortunately, um, the state did not consider the fact that we, you know, they, they budget their enrollment, uh, they look at enrollments when they're creating their state budget, and they're looking at enrollment now. And this is a pandemic. Our enrollment is lower than, you know, historically lower as a state than it's been at forever. So I think it's important that, and unfortunately, what ends up happening is the budget that, that passed is based on those numbers, and it's, it's servicing numbers that will be much higher when the pandemic ends. So I, I just want to add, because I agree with you 100%, but I just want to keep in mind that at the local level, we need to consider that as well. And I think we should be advocating for a perspective that considers that. Because our numbers as, you know, granted, we haven't had a tremendous amount of remote students, but we've had a, an abnormally high amount of, um, of, uh, homeschooling. So, you know, we're gonna, our projected numbers aren't going to be accurate to what we're going to be servicing moving forward either. And that's something we need to consider at every level. Just wanted to say that.
Right. So I think in our, in our enrollment, I think we need to articulate, you know, out of this year's number, X amount is homeschooled, X amount, you know, um, did something else, did, did a remote, you know, I, I don't know how everybody's counted. But, you know, speaking to, to the Catholic school issue I spoke to about earlier, they received 4,000 new students in last August, because the home districts were not in, uh, either a hybrid or, or, or an in-person. So maybe some of those, because that tuition is what, between $8,000 and $10,000 a year, maybe some of those kids, when everyone goes back to normal, you know, will, will migrate back to, to public schools. I just think it's a very, that we need to be, we need to be cognizant of our enrollment trends, the, the factors. You know, I know there's a state number we have to report, but we can articulate to the town where we are. You know, we can, we can send them the state number, and then we can send them, you know, we can show the other numbers. Um, the other thing is the FTE count. Susan and I went over it. I mean, last year we added 5.3 FTEs, really not reflected in this. So we have to find out where that is. Cause the, if the, if the, at the sum is correct, we're showing no growth in FTEs. But I, I, Mrs. Owens, I think we really need to kind of look at the FY21 number, because that should be, um, I want to say 257 or something like that, um, from last year's budget. It should be 252.8 is the number from, for FY21 that we had.
I'm, I'm currently, I'm going through this as well. Um, I haven't finished going through the FTEs, um, from the other day that we went over it. But I, you know, I have gone through and, and some of the numbers. Um, the other thing I want to add, just to, to piggyback on what you said, you know, the cherry sheet is 50,000 less left from the state this year. The local seats from the town are 120,000 less this year. So, um, that's, that's where, that's where we are.
Yep. So a lot of great work today, and a lot, a lot more work to get us to the finish line.
Agreed. Thank you, Ellen.
Hey, Mrs. Marr. Um, Mrs. St. Ange?
I guess I'm just curious in general about, like, I, I know there's a, a subcommittee, but is this something that, like, we need to think about as a whole committee before, you know, like in a, in another, in another meeting, not to add another meeting to our plate. I just don't, I'm just dying to see you guys again, um, frequently. Um, I just think, you know, for me, from my understanding, like when we talked about, when we met and talked about capital budget, that was just helpful for my kind of understanding of the process. I just don't know if we don't need to do something like that again, or?
Well, we're going to have to get that number from the town. That is really, um, I think crucial to what our, our next steps are. Um, you know, and clearly at some point, we're going to, well, depending on the number from the town, we're going to have to articulate a couple of things. Well, one, what is, what is our bad idea list? Like, what are we looking at with that? And then the other thing would be, how does that impact our, uh, our desire for the new staffing? As, as Ellen said, that, you know, one of the things are, and Sue just said too, one of the things our principals are doing is looking at what they need now based on what they have. And is there a, you know, is there a give with one and, uh, and add for another? And we're also trying to factor in retirements and, uh, all, as, so many swimming factors, but without that hard number, it's, it's difficult. And I know that, so it's not a criticism. They're, they're also working under, you know, their constraints as well. But that's, it's just, it's hard to plan without knowing. We're kind of planning for two conting, three contingencies really, you know, uh, lower level or, you know, probably those two, but, uh, something further.
I, I think, if I may jump in, I, I think you have to do a budget to the 2.77. I mean, they gave you that number. So they gave you, so you, so I, I think that, that has to be, it is what it is. And I, I think our best, our best case, and, and I could be wrong, will be 3.26.
Yeah, that's fair. That's, I understand what you're saying. Absolutely.
I, I don't, I, I don't, I don't think, um, I don't think there's any way we're going to get to 4.69.
Yeah, no, I think your, your idea of, and that's what we're trying to do now, but it's just, it's, yeah. So I mean, perhaps that's how we, that's just how we proceed. Right now, we have no choice, but it just would be nice to get, you know?
It's always easier to add.
Yeah, that's for sure. Yeah. Okay. Uh, anything else? Um, Chair McCollum?
Well, if Mrs. St. Ange is done, then we'll move on to Mrs. Colery.
I'm sorry, Lydia, I didn't mean.
I mean.
Cut you off if I did. I'm sorry.
No, you didn't. But I think Mrs. Colery went.
Colery already went. That's right. It was just, it was, sorry, it was memorable. I apologize. Um, I, I don't, I don't have anything to add. I, I, I think that Mrs. Marr adequately addressed most of the thing. I think the budget is frankly fairly troubling. I'm, I'm worried about it. And, uh, you know, we've, it's troubling. I think we're going to be, we're going to find ourselves fairly short. And, and I, I think there are a lot of questions and creative solutions we're going to have to come up with. So, um, I am not prepared to, uh, suggest any of them right now. Uh, so, um, unless there are any other questions for Ms. Owen? Um, we'll move on to the school section. Any comments or updates, um, relative?
Did Ellen have a question? I didn't know if you.
I don't know.
Oh, sorry. I, I was late on the trigger on that. I, I would concur with Mrs. St. Ange that I think it would be terrific if we had a, had a workshop, you know, a school committee workshop, once Mrs. Owen gets the next, um, draft back from her, from the building principals and the leadership group, and we can compare it to where our budget priorities are, where our school committee priorities are. And we can really make it a, a working session, um, to talk about the budget. And, you know, an offline, non-regular meeting would probably be best.
Makes sense. I also think maybe we should talk about the budget before we talked about anything else. Now that we had all those folks there at the time, it just seems like we're always talking about the budget at the end of the meeting. And it's, it's, it's nice that we'll, um, have this, um, meeting because it is a very, very, very important issue. And, um, I concur with what Craig was saying as far as, you know, this is something that we all got to kind of tackle. And thank you, Ellen, for bringing that up, because I think it, we definitely shouldn't. I'm, I'm into that.
Okay, um, Mrs. Marr, I will, uh, I agree. I guess it's Mrs. St. Ange's idea. Okay, Mrs. Marr, I will, I agree, I guess it's Mrs. St. Ange's idea. I agree. I'll send out an email tomorrow, okay, so that we can all sort of circulate times that are available, and we'll do that, okay? I agree that we need to get it done. Like I said, the budget's troubling right now to me. Okay, moving on. Any other questions before I go on? That I'm missing? No, did I miss? Okay. All right, moving on to the school committee section, the school facilities committee is still on there. I just, I haven't reached out to town hall. I need to do that. We need to get that going. So hopefully this will be constituted and functioning soon. But I'm leaving it on there as a constant reminder. Reports from the subcommittee liaison positions. Mrs. Coleroy, any reports?
I don't believe there are any. We will meet on Monday to discuss policy again.
Also, we've been as the communications subcommittee for the first time.
We had our first communications subcommittee meeting, which was fabulous. We discussed the importance of ensuring that we are mindful, that we are in the process of creating our new three-year strategic plan. And so we thought it may make sense to wait a bit to create concrete steps forward for our committee, our subcommittee, sorry, until there's been some progress made on the strategic plan.
We did make that really important decision of sending out the school committee agenda to our school community. And thank you for making that happen. Like, it's just great to get that into people's hands or on their screens.
And thank you to Mrs. St. Ange for being a tireless advocate of getting that agenda out there to as many people as we can.
Yeah, just love to perseverate on an issue. You're welcome.
Mrs. Coleroy, anything else? Okay, Mr. Kearney?
Yes, I know we have some wellness committees coming up. Dr. Scollins and I, and I'm looking forward to that. It's a very good team that we're putting together and I'm really excited about it. It will have, I think we're going to be presenting pretty soon. Great, Dr. Scollins?
Yes, and we're working with a wellness coach from Desi. We received a grant and we were accepted into that. So she joined us, gave us some homework. We were already ahead of it a little bit because we already used the WellSat over the weekend, over the summer. And that's the tool that they use, the WellSat three point O. And so that was really helpful. So she's going to help guide us and we're going to pick a couple of things that we want to address this year, and then we'll continue to chip away at our, at our plan. But she felt our plan was very strong, which was really nice to hear. So, yeah, we are going to present, I think, as soon as we finalize those areas that we're going to focus on.
Yeah, it's a great team. I'm just so proud to be a part of it. Also too, this is just a comment. You know, a lot of these sporting events have been, you know, we're not allowed to go to them, but you are allowed to watch them. You know, my daughters play freshman for the JV basketball, girls' basketball team, and what a game today. It's kind of like, it's so, it's so cool. I can only tell you that a lot of communities, like, we have to sign up for it, so it's like ten dollars a month, but you can watch all the games. However, other communities such as Mashpee, like we played them on Saturday, and they have their own, like, they YouTube the game afterwards. I was hoping that maybe we could, you know, maybe even talk about bringing that around because I think it's just a unique way to show school spirit, not only just for the kids, you know, the kids that go to school, but you know, some of the younger kids that are thinking to inspire to be a basketball player, because it's a lot of fun to, to not only, I had the pleasure of coaching these girls and to see them out there and to perform the way they're performing is incredible. We're in a winning season this year. And, you know, I just want people to know that it's out there to watch these games. And I'm hoping that in the future that, you know, if you can't make a game, you can actually see it. Or, you know, if you want to show your daughter and sit with the family to watch a game, because, you know, they do play three or four, three times a week. And they're exciting games. And today we were winning the whole game and went down to the last shot. And it wasn't good for us, but exciting. That's all I can tell you. My TV's broken, but, no, just kidding. But I just wanted to just throw that out there, because it's really exciting to watch. And it's, I'm hoping that maybe we can expand on that as such as other towns do, so that it'll be available free. But it is a paid service and it's something you can see all the games with.
Okay, did that do it, Mr. Kearney, for you?
Yeah.
All right, Mrs. Marr, any updates or?
Yeah, I just want to comment on what Mr. Kearney just said. So the services he's referring to, it's called Pixalot, and it was implemented, I don't know, two, maybe three years ago. And it's, it was done in conjunction with the previous athletic director in one-four-three TV. And there's a camera in the high school gym, and there's a camera out on alumni field. And it is a subscription service. You do pay for it. And it's a live stream event. And I was not in favor of it because I just, I felt, A, it would cut, could cut down on attendance. And I didn't think, you know, the thought behind it was that ad revenue would help offset the cost. And I don't know how that has shaken out. I know that if there's someone that will film, CohassetAthletics.com has a YouTube channel. And the boys' game was live streamed on Saturday on YouTube. And, but you have to have someone at the game with an iPad, you know, with an internet connection to stream it and record it. And that's a free subscription through CohassetAthletics.com. And other, you know, Abington uses YouTube, a lot of schools use YouTube as well. So I think it's a question of getting someone there to film. Let's see, I don't know if you want to talk about capital budgets. I mean, it's an ongoing. It's an, I don't want to say it's a battle, but it's an ongoing project. We have questions, I think. Maybe we have a subcommittee meeting or something, but we have to start getting some of those questions answered, like the iPad, like the Chromebooks, how many we have, how many we, how many do we need? You know, they had very specific questions after our first meeting. And I think we need to start to prepare, because I don't know if we're going to be on deck with them on the February twenty-first, because we said the end of February, or?
We said the beginning of March.
Or beginning of March, so it'd be March first, maybe?
I think, I don't know, because I remember we told Lisa Raden the timeframe at the meeting, we told her that it would be in the first weeks of March. I don't know if.
For her specific piece, but for the rest of them, I thought it was.
Okay, I think I stand corrected. All right, that's right.
Yeah. So we had a meeting today on the turf, replacement, and we need to get, Steve is working on an estimate for the track. So we can get that CPC application done, because they want that this month. So things are heating up on that front. And I'd just like to, I don't want this to sound nitpicky, but I'd just like to kind of make a request that when we have major things, and I know, I know everyone's working hard and, and I struggle to get prepared for the plan this afternoon, I, to get, you know, read. And if there are things that we could have ahead of time, like last meeting, it was the SOA grant. I saw, we saw it for the first time and voted on it. And I think sometimes these things, speaking for myself, with my schedule, I just require a little bit more time to be able to read, absorb, and digest it properly. And so if there's anything we can do, I know sometimes we can't, and I understand that. But going forward, if there's anything we can do on some of these major things that require a vote, where we can get it in the packet for that weekend, I would appreciate it.
Understand. Thank you.
That's it.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Marr. Mrs. St. Ange?
There have been a few kind of alternative energy-related updates. Not a meeting, but in the next meeting, there's going to be a presentation about the electric buses. So I'm excited to see that. I think Mrs. Marr and I will both try to attend that meeting if we're available. We'll see what our schedules allow for, but I'm excited to learn more about that and then to bring that information back to the committee. As a part of the solar negotiation committee, I met with one of the companies that was kind of given a letter of intent to design. So the Select Energy was asked to continue with solar on the roof. And so they are continuing with those plans and putting the paperwork in place in, because of certain extensions, as I explained before. You know, the timing could end up working for roof replacement and roof solar. So they are continuing the steps to make it possible if that, if that all aligns. And Maresco just sent plans today, which I admittedly did not open yet because I was busy. But I will share those. I'll take a look at those and share those with you guys. That would be for the, you know, like the solar over the parking lots. So the different avenues are being explored and plans are being put together. So just kind of continuing that process. I think those are the only updates. I'll just be excited to learn more about the buses, and then we'll bring that back when we can.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. St. Ange. No updates from me. Moving on to the next agenda item, I don't think there are any minutes. I didn't have any in the packet to approve. So we'll move right on from that. There are no topics not reasonably anticipated within forty-eight hours of the meeting that I've been made aware of. And similarly, there's no reason that I know of to move an executive session unless there's a member of the school committee that has a reason at this time, then I would seek a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Coleroy. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Kearney. All in favor, please indicate. So enroll call, Mrs. Coleroy.
Aye.
Mr. Kearney?
Aye.
Mrs. Marr?
Aye.
Mrs. St. Ange?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at nine twenty-three PM. Thank you all so much for your time. It was a very productive meeting. Dr. Sullivan and Dr. Scollins. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for putting all that work together, putting the report together.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Scollins, and thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
Pat?